Good afternoon, sorry, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners Special Business Meeting. Today is Thursday, August 19th, 2021. It is 10:35 in the morning. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd like to welcome everybody for joining us here today. We are here to talk about a public health order that was put in place by Tri-County Health. Douglas County had negotiated the ability to opt out of any public health orders that the Board of Commissioners feel are not appropriate for our citizens. And that is what we are here today to start talking about. So here's what we're going to do. I'm going to open this up for my fellow commissioners if they are interested in just giving a brief comment to start. The important part of today is hearing from each and every one of you. So we are going to go through the list. I will take 10 people from the room, and then I will take 10 people from online. You will have a maximum of three minutes. We would like to ask you to be considerate of everybody in the room so everybody has the opportunity to speak. So if you hear people before you saying what you want to say, you might want to consider coming forward and saying, hello, my name is, and I live, and I want to tell you that I support what I have heard, either on one side or the other. Thank you for your time. Because we really want to give everyone the opportunity to be heard. We are working, we had no idea there would be so many people. So we are working to get some more room in the back. So just be patient as we get that done. But in interest of your time, we're going to start now and start moving people through, then waiting till we have seats for everybody. So I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they would have any comments to start. Commissioner Layden.
You know, I just would like to thank everyone for being with us here today. I think one of the hallmarks of what it means to be a Coloradan and to live in Douglas County is that we come together as a community in respect and civility to share what's important to us and what's on our hearts. I will tell you that after 18 months of trying to manage a global pandemic on a local level, the rights and freedoms of our parents and our families are paramount to me. And I am so thrilled to see so many faces in this room that are here taking time out of your day to share with us. So I'm really looking forward to hearing what you have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. Commissioner Teal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those of you who know me, who probably got to know me in my prior experience on the Casserac Town Council, know that I actually like to see rooms like this. I like to see full rooms where we are dealing with a topic that makes people want to come out and speak up. You know, I feel like we have a blessing as commissioners here at the county level because we are here as your representatives in local government. We are not a faceless bureaucracy. We are not faraway Congress. We're here, we work for you. I do look forward to everyone's comments today, regardless of where you stand on the issue. I assure you, we have been exposed to a great deal of information on this topic. I'm very interested in hearing the information that you would give us today and what you would like to share today. So, thank you for being here. I look forward to hearing from everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I'm going to call the first five names. The first person can come forward, and then the rest of you are ready to come forward after the first person speaks. So we're going to start with, I believe it's Charis Walgreen, Philip Summons, Matt Smith, Liz Lugo, and Donna Wren. So Charis or Charis, I'm sorry.
It's Charis.
Charis. So when you come forward, if you would spell your last name, so give us your first name, spell your last name, and give us the address for the record. And then you have three minutes.
Okay, perfect. It's Charis Walgreen, W-A-L-G-R-E-N. Uncomfortable, to say the least, to be up here, but I think this is what you do as a mom. So here I am. I have three children. My oldest was a senior in 2019. So we went through all of that with her. She missed all of her senior year, senior party, got a, maybe you could call it a graduation. But I think we all felt like we were doing the right thing as parents and community leaders and trying to slow the curve and do what we thought was right for our teachers and the people in our public. But a year and a half, I think we're over a year and a half now, I stand here in shock that we're still discussing the same thing. So I think time has proven that there's little that we can do to stop this virus. I now have a senior again in high school at Shap, and he certainly deserves a full senior year and all the activities that go along with that. I also have a sixth grader. My sixth grade son is behind in reading. And I went through quite a few struggles with the school during COVID to properly get him the help that he needs so that he can catch up on reading. So to say that COVID has been a distraction in his education would be beyond an understatement. So this year, we will start with a program that I know he needs to do to get ahead in reading, and he deserves that kind of education. I know he deserves a mask-free education so he can see his teachers' expressions and watch the teachers helping him read, enunciate words. And so I am here to say that we want choice as parents. If you want to mask your child, you have every right to do that. But I have a choice to say my children are done. They're not at risk. In fact, our entire family has had COVID. Little symptoms, thank God. But I need to hear, when is enough enough? I just want to say that if we lose choice as parents, what do we have? What's our role as parents? We want educators at this point. We do not want dictatorship. And it is time that we say enough is enough. Thank you.
Philip.
Oh, time hasn't come yet. Do I have to wait till that's over?
All yours.
My name is Philip Summons, spelled just like the court order. I live at 16610 East Blackhorn Drive in Parker. There are two points that I wanted to make. The first one is about liability. All last year, I think a lot of the other parents were happy just to have their kid back in school. The masks weren't a deal breaker at that point. I can't speak for everybody else's kid because I wouldn't do that anyway, but I really can't speak for them because I couldn't see their faces. My son, aside from having rashes on his hands and irritation in his skin from all the times that he had to disinfect throughout the day, he also had irritations around his mouth. And undoubtedly, that had to have been from the mask. My wife is a respiratory therapist at Children's Hospital, so I pretty much had the best of the best in terms of trying to mitigate that. But we could solve it. And admittedly, that's not a huge drawback from having to wear masks, considering we had our son back in school. But it looks like we might be looking at the entire year now without, with the kids having to have masks on. And the question that I have comes to liability. Parents are being forced to have their kids have masks, and a little irritation could turn into something else. And I've heard nobody talk about who's going to be responsible for that. I've heard nobody say anything about that. And I feel like if you're not going to be liable for what this could do to our kids, you shouldn't mandate it, period. My second point is just about the timing of this order that we got two days ago. We've known about the Delta variant for a couple of months. And it certainly feels to me like decisions were made after the kids are in school so that our, so that parents don't have a lot of choices. I mean, I'm a big freedom guy. I think that a lot of...
Excuse me. You know, we want to hear from you, but I think in order to move along today's meeting, if we could not have the clapping, just so we can continue moving quickly, because we want all of you to be able to speak. So thank you for understanding. Go ahead, Philip.
Well, as I was saying, I believe in freedom. I believe that a school, or an institution, or a business should have the right to conduct itself any way that it wants to conduct itself. And likewise, we have the freedom if we want to attend those places or have our children attend those places. But we've known about this Delta variant since June. And now that the kids are back in school, we don't have a lot of choices now. We could have, last year, we were given the opportunity to, we were given the roadmap on how we can teach our kids at home if we wanted to. But we've now left with no choices. We're not going to pull our kids out because we can't enroll them anywhere else. And we all have jobs, so we can't really plan now to teach our kids at home. And I think at the very least, that was poorly timed, possibly even intentional. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summons. I'm going to ask once again that we refrain from clapping so that we can move this along quickly. We really want to hear from you, so we're just asking for some order in here so everybody can come up and speak, and we're not going to have clapping in here, please. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
All right. Perfect. My name is Matthew Smith, S.M.I.T.H., 3680 Penang Drive.
You know, I apologize. As a point of personal privilege, I'm going to ask the Chair to walk back that decision. I think all of these people took their time out of their day to be here. And as one commissioner, I am okay with you expressing yourself however you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Can I get the time reset? Is that possible? All right, perfect. I stand before you as a father of an elementary child who, right now, is sitting in a class breathing air, just as God intended, with his friends. And I'm not going to talk about science. I'm going to sit here and talk, I want to get you in the perspective of a child and think how confusing this must be. I'm going to start with my favorite lie: two weeks to flatten the curve. Wear a mask. Don't wear a mask. Wear two masks. Do not wear N95 masks. They are for healthcare professionals. Wear N95 masks, they are most effective. Stay six feet apart. Stay three feet apart. Sit behind plexiglass. Remove the plexiglass. We will have in-person classes. We are moving to remote classes. We are back to in-person classes. Your child has been in close contact with someone and must now stay home for a 10-day quarantine period. You can play with your friends. You can't play with your friends. You can only play with your friends within your cohort. Wear a mask while getting food and walking to your table. Remove your mask while you eat, but put it back on if you must use the restroom. Good afternoon, class. Time for our five-minute mask break. We cannot sing "Happy Birthday." Experts are concerned that the P within "happy" will cause excess droplets to get released. If your child cannot keep his/her/mask on during this flight, we will make an emergency landing and contact authorities. If you want things to return to normal, get this magical vaccine, and I'm paraphrasing, of course. Send a message to Tri-County and stop the confusion with our kids. I don't need your help to raise my son. I don't need Tri-County's help to raise my son. I don't need Polis's help. I don't need the federal government. If I do, I will stop by and ask for it. Stop the mask mandates. Stop the confusion with our kids. And I relinquish the rest of my time.
Liz Lugo.
I hope he'll cooperate with me. Liz Lugo, L-U-G-O. I address 11092 Sweet Cicely Lane in Parker. And I agree with everything that I've heard from my fellow citizens right before me. So the one thing I do want to make sure that the Board of Commissioners is very particular to, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and a seven-week-old son. And I really want to make sure that my two-and-a-half-year-old that is at a daycare in Parker, that this opting out presumptively by Douglas County is very clear that it includes the childcare centers and the early childhood development sector department. I'm far from an expert on this area. Really got pulled into this by fellow moms about noon yesterday with emails circulating from their childcare centers that as of Monday, two-year-olds and above would be mandated to have masks on. A lot of concern of the teachers at the childcare centers, certainly the directors. Even our own director, there seems to be misunderstanding or confusion about the jurisdiction of Tri-County Health versus Douglas County opting out. So as you make your consideration, please be mindful of that early childhood development arena as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Donna Wren, W-R-E-N, and I live at 6081 Bridle Path Lane in Parker. We recently moved to Colorado from the East Coast, deliberately picking Douglas County because we saw what you did last year in opting out when the Tri-County Health tried to do this. And we moved here because we recognized and appreciated your bold move to stand up for the citizens of Douglas County. So now I'm here begging you to do the same. I have a child who is deaf. She has cochlear implants. She participates in a hearing world. But it is not easy. It has never been easy for her. We have worked for her and on her behalf since the day she was born, getting her therapy, getting her surgery, working with her teachers, getting her equipment. It was still hard. And then, last year, they put a mask on her face. She made it through because she had no choice. It was not easy. She struggled every single day in class. Her teacher tried everything. They tried the face shield, they tried the clear masks. They don't work because she still can't hear, she still can't see clearly. And as she pointed out, it's kind of gross to see people spittle on the glass. So keep that in mind when people say to you, oh, just wear the clear masks. So this year, she has an opportunity to get back to learning. I need to give you some statistics. Six out of 1,000 children in this country are born with hearing loss. That's the highest prevalence of birth defect in the country. That doesn't even account for all the adults who lose their hearing. Putting a mask on kids' faces, or people's faces, prevents these kids from being able to develop speech, being able to socialize and participate in a hearing world, and being able to learn to read. We know from an early age, masking adults for babies has this effect. Imagine going through life, not being able to see people's faces and hearing what they have to say and understanding what's going on. So from a mother's perspective, and I speak for every parent of a special needs kid that is struggling with masks, I beg of you, stand up once again for parents' rights and for the rights of our kids to see and participate in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, Commissioner Layden, Commissioner Teal. My name is Mark Basley, that's B-A-I-S-L-E-Y. I live at 10398 Totem Run in Roxborough. I'm here representing the 53,000 or so residents that I represent in the House of Representatives at the Colorado State Capitol. I'm also here on behalf of my three fellow state representatives. Representative Kevin Van Winkle, who represents Heinz Ranch. Representative Ransom, who represents Parker and Lone Tree and Acres Green. Representative Patrick Neville, who represents Castle Rock and Castle Pines. Together, between the, among the four of us, we represent all residents of Douglas County. And so we are here together to thank you, commissioners, and to encourage you to move forward with the resolution recommending an opt-out, at least, for the parents in Douglas County schools. What would be preferable, probably, or in my opinion, would be that they have an opt-in option instead of having to opt-out, as they have today. They can just not send their child in with a mask today, or they can send their child in with a mask today, and no one would complain about that. But I want to suggest that a resolution from you all that would be directed to the school board would be received probably very positively and constructively, and here's why. So there are three parties that I see involved in this. There is the Tri-County Health, there is the Douglas County School Board, and then there are the parents. And they have increasing areas of responsibility for these students. For the Tri-County Health, an organization that I don't have a lot of faith in, they are very narrow-focused, they're frankly obsessed with this pandemic, and they're very partisan. But they are single-focused and single-minded about trying to eliminate the disease, the pandemic, and they don't have much interest when it comes to education. Now, when it comes to Douglas County schools, they have a broader scope of responsibility. Their responsibility includes the education of the children, and of course, their health as well. But the parents have the greatest area of responsibility and therefore should have the greatest authority. The reason I think that it could be received positively, however, is that back in December, when the Governor called us together with a special session to address the pandemic, I had the opportunity to pass one bill or to submit one bill. So I called David Ray, the President of Douglas County Schools, and offered that opportunity to our school district. He did give me a great idea. He said, "We would like to have funding for a doctor who would stand on our behalf to negotiate with Tri-County," because Tri-County issues its directives, and it is unreasonable many times. For instance, the example that he gave me was when they, every time someone has a sniffle, he says the entire classroom, including the teacher, needed to quarantine for a couple of weeks. So they had about 14,000 students quarantined at home rather than in the classroom because someone had a sniffle, and they didn't know whether it was COVID or not. So I submitted that bill, and for the record, it's House Bill 20B-1008. It was not passed by the special session because we're in the super minority, and so those things don't get passed. However, that was an attempt by myself and by David Ray, President of Douglas County School District, to give them some more authority over the well-being of the children. But think about this, the further out the responsibility is, the further out the authority ought to be. No one knows and is concerned more about those students than the parents themselves. They are concerned about certainly their health and their education, but also their mental and their social well-being. We should give the total authority to the parents. So I appreciate your considering this resolution. I encourage you to move forward with the resolution, to instruct Douglas County schools to give parents the authority whether or not to have their students wear a mask in classroom or not. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Representative Basley. The next up are Lisa Mason, Amanda Johnston, Robin Webb, Liz Willoughby, and Sean Benson.
Hi, good afternoon, Lisa Mason, parent of two girls in DCSD, address 8056 Grady Circle, Casserac, Colorado. I'm here today to advocate for the rights of parents to choose what is best for their family when it comes to masking, and we need your help. Last year, DCSD sent out an email asking parents about in-person learning masks, and those who completed it, 84% said they wanted in-person learning with no masks. Mind you, this was the height of the pandemic and without a vaccine. Now, this year, based off of the Tri-County Health survey, of those who completed it, 64% are strongly against masking the kids. There are two points heard consistently from pro-maskers during the Tri-County Health meeting. One, the only way to end this is to mask up. And two, their way is the only solution. When I had my first child eight years ago, I was told to be prepared when she started daycare because she would get sick a lot from the germs passing from child to child. But my pediatrician assured me these were all good things because it would help build the immune system. Fast forward to 2021, does this medical advice not apply? There is a reason why there's a spike in RSV this year. We didn't allow exposure to germs for kids, and a virus will continue to morph so it can continue to spread. We masked and closed down all of last year, and it still spread. And here we are, almost two years later, pushing for the same solution. They are already talking about the Lambda variant, and there's quotes of Bill Gates saying the 20s will be known as the decade of the pandemic. Enough is enough. If we continue to consider masks the solution, this will never end. If we let them, our children will continue to wear masks until they don't remember a time when they were required. By that time, their immune systems will be so weak and compromised, they won't be able to fight anything off. We've gotten to a point where we talk about cases and not deaths. Children are the lowest risk of any demographic for death, which is widely known and undisputed. We never mask them for the seasonal flu, which has a higher death rate in children than COVID does. Why are we masking them now? Last year, we heard, sorry, we masked the kids to protect the high-risk adults and staff in schools. And later, we're told, schools were the safest place to be because children were the lowest risk. Now, we are protecting the vaccinated masked staff again with the lowest-risk demographic. If that's not completely backwards, I don't know what is. Parents for choice are not saying that masks cannot be worn. We are saying that each individual deserves the right to choose based on their situation. Nobody should be discriminated against based on whether they wear or do not wear a mask. Just because we are against mandates does not mean we are against those who want to wear a mask. I will leave with this because it's very simple. If your mask works, why do I need one? If your vaccine works, why do I need one? Parents should have a choice on the risks we want to take for our family, period.
My name is Amanda Johnston, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N, and I live at 3401 Morning Song Court in Casserac. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. Actually, I'm baffled that we are even here right now. Tri-County asked for us to fill out a survey on where we stand regarding masks in school, and overwhelmingly, Douglas County, 65% say, no, we do not want to mask our children. You have a crowd here like this because we are fed up. We spent an entire year last year jumping through hoops, keeping our kids from seeing their friends and learning in person, forcing them to wear a mask, and we are done. We plead. We pleaded and we emailed for the masks. We pleaded and we emailed for the madness to stop last year, and no one listened to the parents. Now, we are faced with this again. After a summer of dangling the carrot that we would be sending our kids back to school for a normal school year, we are now having the rug pulled out from under us right at the very last minute. We've pleaded and emailed and sent countless, spent countless hours trying to get ahold of people in charge to share how strongly we do not want masks on our kids. And 65% of us said no. But Tri-County decided to do it again and ignore the parents. We are the parents of our children. We know what is best for them. It is not your job or anyone else's to protect us. It is your job to represent us. Please represent the people of Douglas County who are overwhelmingly saying we do not want to mask our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Amanda.
Hello, my name is Liz Willoughby. I live at 3368 Shire Circle, here in Castle Rock. I'm a mom of two. One of my two has asthma. I chose not to send him to school last year, because I wanted him to breathe freely. We didn't have a choice. The distance learning didn't work for us. The first spring, they enacted it. And I want him to go to school, and I want her to go to school, and I want them to have the right to learn with their friends and with the teachers that they love. I did a little survey yesterday with the kids, and I said, "Hey, out of all your classes, how many kids actually are wearing masks right now?" You know, we've got this Delta variant going on, whatever. They said, "Top's one or two people in the class." And some classes, zero kids. So at this point, if parents are so consumed by COVID and Delta, they would be masking their children right now, wouldn't they? They wouldn't wait for you all to dictate that for them. I think there is an easy way to satisfy every family here, by letting them make the choice for their children. We raised them, we kept them alive this long, probably keep them alive for many more years. And, you know, it's unbelievable what is going on here. My parents moved here from communist Poland, and they're like, "We came here to be free. We came here so you could be free, and so your kids could be free." But here we are. Thank you.
Did we miss Robin Webb?
Yeah, I'm right there.
Thank you, Robin.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name's Robin Webb, W-E-B-B. I live at 9917 Hawthorne Street in Highlands Ranch. And I want to start with, I really appreciate all you have already done to stand up for us. That's a big deal to me, and you are so appreciated. And I think there's an aspect in this discussion that's being almost entirely ignored, and that's the mental health crisis that is currently going on. COVID is not killing children en masse, but suicide is. One of my children went from a happy, well-adjusted 4.0 and on the dean's list to suicidal last year. Masks were definitely not the only reason, but they contributed. They said that they are dehumanizing, and she felt isolated behind it. She also noted, noted, and I've noticed this too, that masked people don't make eye contact. There is no real science to back these measures being shoved down our throats. The media is not reporting deaths anymore, they're reporting cases. Why? The media is also not reporting the sharp increase in suicide, suicidality, due to these measures. While all loss from COVID is indeed tragic, what about the losses from suicide, overdoses, et cetera? Why don't those deaths matter? My family and all, and I all had COVID. It's not fun to be sick, and we were okay. I know there will be people coming at me with that statement, with, "What about the ones who are not okay?" I'm going to turn that right back around on them. Your kids are okay in a mask all day? Mine are not. Bottom line, this decision is up to parents, as are all health decisions. I, again, really appreciate you standing up for us, and having a backbone, which seems to be very rare these days. In conclusion, all you have to do is look at the survey results from Tri-County, which has already been covered, and the majority of residents who do not want this imposed upon us. My kids go to two different schools. I've seen a handful of children in both schools in masks, and no teachers. If people want to mask their children, they should absolutely have the right to do that. My children are being taught to respect the children in masks and treat them like every other child. Why do the people who are pro-masking children think they can force the majority to bend to their beliefs? Enough is enough. Let's fight to make decisions for our children, and thank you for fighting with us.
Good morning, my name is Sean Benson, I live in Douglas County. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here today.
Excuse me, would you spell your last name and give us your address?
Benson B. Enson, 9610 Lone Irish Place in Roxboro.
Thank you.
I'm here today to speak on behalf of my daughter, whom the Tri-County Health Department has forgotten that I am the parent who makes the health decisions for my child. Enough is enough. We have put up with flattening the curve, lockdowns, just wear a mask for 100 days, and the CDC changing their position not once, but six times since the start of this pandemic. The CDC, as well as the Tri-County Health Department, especially after the obvious biased conversation led by the minority opinion at their meeting Monday evening, have lost all credibility to ethically and intelligently inform us on any health issues, especially when there has been zero discussions about the best defense against the virus, living a healthy lifestyle, which my family has practiced on a daily basis, long before this pandemic began. This virus does not kill kids. The data has been very clear on this fact from the very beginning, and it hasn't changed with the Delta variant. I'm the weird guy who actually reads the studies published about this pandemic, not just the articles written about the studies from the people who clearly haven't analyzed the data, and I have some of them printed out right here. We have known about the efficacy and ineffectiveness of masks for six years by the only RCT ever done on this issue, and we just spent the last year proving that there is zero correlation between mask compliance and virus transmission by conducting the largest scientific experiment on a global scale. Cases have gone up and down, regardless of mask compliance. The masks are clearly not working, as our leaders would like them to, and in fact, they are doing far more damage than not wearing one at all. The virus is being retained in these damp masks and being spread far more than if we were not wearing a mask at all, as been proven in this RCT done on this topic. We are all, all we are asking is for the right to choose to wear a mask, and the right to make our own health decisions for ourselves and our children. This is a civil rights issue of our time, and history was not kind to those on the wrong side of the last civil rights movement, and history shall not be kind to those on the wrong side of this one. There is a big difference between the two sides here. One side wants to choose whether or not to wear a mask, and allow the other side to also make that choice. The other side wants to make that decision for everyone, and force their personal health choices onto others. Douglas County School District has done a great job in educating my daughter to be a leader, and what great leaders do when their civil rights are being taken away from them, by teaching her about the courageous actions of Rosa Parks and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. My daughter will be following in their footsteps and standing up for her civil rights. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness aren't just some words that should be put in air quotes. They mean something, and come from this, from the document that our freedom was founded on, the Declaration of Independence. Many people bled and died for those words, and it is a slap in the face to them when anyone disregards these founding principles of our freedom. My daughter will be standing up for those principles through civil disobedience. In conclusion, let me be clear, whatever mandate does or does not exist on Monday, my daughter will not be wearing a mask in school.
The next five names, Luke King, Gary Godfrey, Cassandra Garrison, Kristen Billings, and Susie Lyons. Luke, if you can give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Yes, ma'am, good morning. My name's Luke King. My last name is K-I-N-G. My address is 11250 South Highway 83, Franktown, Colorado. I really appreciate what you guys have done so far. I really don't see any need to co-parent my son with Tri-County. It's another business. I have three children. And my daughters both went through the mask stuff last year, they broke out in really bad acne, which could cause scars for life. And I don't want either one of my beautiful little girls to have that problem, because they were forced to wear a mask. It caused them problems in school, they couldn't stand it. Now, my son's five years old. He's a third generation to go to a little schoolhouse out in Franktown, out in the country. They've got an awesome ag program, he's super excited, he's doing great in school. I will pull my son out of school, if they tell you he has to wear a mask. I don't want to do that, I don't want to homeschool him. I am fortunate enough to work for myself, so I have the ability, but most parents don't. But I'm not going to make him sit there at five years old, and try to focus on having a mask on his face all day long, when five-year-old little boys already have a hard enough time keeping their attention on schoolwork. I'm not going to be told what to do by Tri-County. I mean, as far as I see it, he's my kid. I frankly, I still have the title, to him in the safe at home. I don't need them telling me what to do. So yeah, if there's anything you guys can keep pushing, or we don't have to do this, that'd be great, because I want my son to get an education, and not worry about a mask. I really stress my time.
My name is Gary Godfrey, G-O-D-F-R-E-Y, live 2294 Castle Gate Drive North, here in Castle Rock. And as I mentioned to someone earlier, I was going to be here this morning to support this measure that you have to opt-out of the Tri-County Health decisions on the mask mandate here. Lot of people remember November 2020, I remember going before town council here in Castle Rock, and standing up on behalf of the local business owner here in the town, simply because the restrictions they were doing at the time, the things were affecting the economy, as well as every local business owner's role, as every job and employee. Now, when it comes to the school district, when it comes to parents, when it comes to children, yes, you know what? A lot of things like that trickle up. And when they trickle up, they trickle up to the, the, the parent who has a job, they trickle to the, to the job that is set up by an employer, they trickle to the local business owner. They go to the economy, they go to everything here. So what I'm looking at here today, is I'm, I'm encouraging and supporting this opt-out, simply because the precedent is to be established now. This has gone on, like I've heard over and over, and I'm not going to reiterate things, it's, it's been said enough. When it comes down to it, I'll be back on the streets if I have to, and I'll be drawing a line in the sand, along with other, everybody else. Because I, for one, realize one thing, you know, my personal freedom is important. And when I stand here today, for me, it's all about the personal freedoms. I hate this mantra, but again, it's not, it's my body, my choice, but at this point, it's my business, my choice. It's my school, my choice, everything that goes along with it. So I just wanted to be here and give that support, and I appreciate your time.
Cassandra Garrison?
Good morning, my name is Cassandra Garrison, last name G-A-R-R-I-S-O-N. I'm at 1816 West Lake Ave in Littleton. I am a mother of an 11-year-old. I am also a registered healthcare professional, and have been serving in that capacity in my community for over 17 years. I love my God, my country, my freedom, and like all the other people in this room, my child. I am in full support of a parent's right to choose what is best for our kids. As a mom, I can confidently say that parents inherently will not purposely put their kids in harm's way, and I would ask that you consider that very obvious fact when making decisions such as these. In medicine, surgical masks were designed to be used once and only once, and thrown in the trash as we leave a room. They were designed this way, so that we did not spread diseases to ourselves, to other surfaces outside of the rooms of the individual who was sick. They do not prevent other people from getting sick from us, they were designed to protect us from getting things from people that are sick. Masks do more harm than good when being put on someone who is healthy, than they do on putting some, on someone who actually has symptoms and disease. And 95 masks, which are not even available to the general public, are also only functional at their 95% capacity of stopping viruses, if they are professionally fitted, so that you do not get any particles coming in. Those are therefore also not of any benefit. Our kids are touching, fiddling, and playing with masks that they wore for several hours, into multiple environments, touching multiple surfaces, as well as their faces. This is completely nullifying the purpose of putting children in masks, or anyone for that matter. Our kids are being emotionally, physically, and socially damaged as a result of this, and this is all based on tactics around data that is not accurate, and is not based on scientific findings of any sort. Masking healthy individuals should stop. I respectfully request that parents alone be allowed to consider the risks and benefits of wearing a mask for their child and family.
Good morning, I'm Kristen Billings, B-I-L-L-I-N-G-S. I live at 3292 Christie Ridge Road in Sedalia. My family, we are new to Douglas County, and thankful to be out of Arapahoe County for reasons such as this. I have many concerns that have aligned with much of what all the parents have said here this morning. My concern here is that the whittling away of our freedom has been happening for a while now. We all see it. And if we can't stand up for the rights that we should have as parents, to choose what's best for the children, that God has entrusted to our care, the inalienable rights that we should have as parents, given to us by God, our Creator, and not by any politician. If we can't, if we can't come forward and gain back our freedom when it comes to a mask, what's next? You know what's next, it's vaccines. We're not going to have, we're going to have the same conversation about vaccine mandates if we can't stop things now. And then what's next? And we're all concerned about the health implications, and the social, and physical, and emotional challenges that are coming along with these masks for our children. But you know that eventually, this is going to get worse and worse, if we can't stand up for, for freedom now. And then what are our children going to have to experience? I mean, look at some of the big cities around this country, and what children are experiencing. If we think that we're immune, in Colorado, and even in Douglas County, to some of those things, we're not. We have to stand up now, and, and fight for freedom with little things like masks, even though it seems monumental right now, in order to be able to get our footing and stand up for freedom when it comes to the bigger and bigger and bigger challenges that are coming down the road. This is just the beginning. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Susie Lyons, and I live at 1052 Country Club Estates Drive in Castle Rock. I have two children, I have a freshman in high school, and I also have a five-year-old kindergartner. I want to thank you first off, for having the opportunity to speak. I, like everyone else here, that has spoke before me, also, thanks you so much for the opportunity to opt-out of this Tri-County Health Order. I'm just so thankful that we, that we still have this opportunity. I'm a conservative in a liberal state, and I feel like Douglas County is, is one of the last areas around us, that, that we still feel like we have a little bit of freedom, and that we, we still can feel heard. I was in pharmaceutical sales for 10 years, before I became a stay-at-home mom, and a lot of my doctors, whenever I was talking with them, they would also, they would always say, you know, medicine, they didn't want to give it out to people just willy-nilly, they always wanted it to be a risk-to-benefit ratio. And the risk-to-benefit ratio does not make sense, masking small children, or, or children at all, in this instance. I'm looking at the data, I am a frequent visitor of the Tri-County Health website, looking at the different counties and what our numbers are. And I just ask that you continue to support choice for our county and for our kids. I'll continue to pray for you guys, to pray for our town, and to pray for our leaders and our nation. And again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, for me to be able to speak. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susie. Troy, do you have people online?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas, I have seven folks waiting to speak.
Okay, if you would like to call the first one?
I would. John DeCarlo, you are unmuted, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Yes, okay. My name is John DeCarlo. I'm getting feedback here, I'm coming through okay there. I am 10540 Wagon Box Circle in Highlands Ranch.
Pardon me, John, I'm going to mute you just for a second, please turn down your speaker, and then hopefully that will not give us the feedback, just turn it down a bit.
I'm not sure.
Mr. DeCarlo, are you there?
Now I can't hear you, I will proceed. I've been listening since very near the beginning of the meeting. It's obvious that everyone in attendance who has spoken is in favor of your resolution to opt-out of the, the mask mandate. So I'm probably going to be considered a voice in the wilderness here. I am in favor of maintaining the mask mandate. The first thing is that, you know, there's been over 600,000 deaths in the US, I don't know how many deaths in Douglas County, I don't have that number. This is not a fantasy, this is reality. is reality. We've learned during the pandemic that masks do reduce transmission. A number of people have spoken about choice. I'm in favor of choice in many ways, but not when someone's choice affects other people. And that's what's at stake here. One kid not wearing a mask increases the risk to other kids. Now, we've got three grandchildren in the Douglas County School System in the lower grades, the grammar schools. They're all under age of 11. They basically are too young to get vaccinated. It's not allowed for them yet. So I would wish that you would not go through with this referendum that you have here. But I understand that everyone there has spoken in favor of it. But anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Troy, who is next?
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Our next person is going to be Brian Clark. Brian, you're unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. My name is Brian Clark. The last name is spelled C-L-A-R-K-E. My address is 2271 Briar Grove Drive. Live in Highlands Ranch. Much like the last speaker, I will probably be in the minority in this meeting. I'm not too surprised that all of the people that are in favor of a mask mandate are calling in remotely, and everyone else is in the room together. Also, not that surprised that many of those speaking in the room have already had COVID. I know we're all tired of the pandemic. It doesn't mean it's going to end just because we're tired of it, unfortunately. And having a more contagious strain doesn't mean we should just throw up our hands and stop trying. I know masks aren't popular, and I know they're not perfect. But just to give you my experience as a parent of two kids that are too young to be vaccinated, I've already received two tech exposures, notices from my youngest child in the first week of school, potentially indicating that the virus is spreading inside her classroom with half the kids unmasked. We decided to keep our child home this week to give us more time to see if it's continuing to spread in her classroom. And I know all the kids in that room have been exposed now, so I don't want to send my kid in where half the kids are not wearing masks and they've just been exposed. It just seems like a poor decision as a parent to keep my kid safe. I know that's what we're all concerned about here. My oldest daughter has already been given one exposure notice. We went ahead and kept her in class because we don't know that it's spreading in the classroom yet. I just, I feel like we need to do something. Just the fact that we don't like masks and that they're not perfect doesn't mean that they're not worth trying. And I think we really just need to do more than cross our fingers and accept that they're all going to get COVID. I would like to express, or I would like to address a few of the misconceptions I've heard today, too. Where does it end? Why don't we mask for the flu then? And the reason is, we have a vaccine that's effective for the flu, and that's available. We don't have that. We don't have that for COVID. I guess people don't like the flu vaccine. Okay. The idea that it's more dangerous to drive to school, that's why we have seat belts. And unlike seat belts, you know, seat belts don't put other people at risk if you don't wear them. That's the problem, right? And tyranny. I know 103 years ago in the 1918 flu pandemic, there were mask mandates. And if that's tyranny, I'm amazed to tell you that our country has survived 103 years since then. You know, the idea, if masks don't work, why, if, sorry, if your mask works, why do I need one? If your vaccine works, why do I need one? The reason is clear. The masks don't just protect wearers. They help reduce the spread from infected people. It's called source control. If a person with COVID is unmasked, they will be more likely to spread it to more people. And if a person is unvaccinated, they'll be more likely to catch it and therefore spread it. It's not hard. It's just common sense. I know you don't want to hear it, and you don't want to accept it, but taking a small measure of wearing a mask in a classroom with kids that are too young to be vaccinated, it's a simple measure to keep kids safer, literally shouldn't pass through the next three, four months when a vaccine becomes available for them. And then they truly can be protected from the other kids that choose not to get vaccinated and choose not to wear a mask. That's all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Troy, who's next?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have Michael, and I do not want to butcher his last name. So, Michael, I am unmuting you. Go ahead. Starts with a U.
Thank you. My name is Michael Uchida. That's U-C-H-I-D-A. And I live at 10784 Chadsworth Lane in Highland Ranch. My seven-year-old son attends a school in Douglas County. So as we all know, we're seeing a surge in COVID cases around the world. Here in Colorado, however, the uptick is not nearly as dramatic. Back in November of 2020, here in Colorado, the daily new cases peaked at well over 6,000. Today, however, that number is only around 1,000. Furthermore, the number of deaths in Colorado remains low, steady and not increasing. Back when we had 6,000 cases a day, we didn't panic. And we don't need to panic now at 1,000 cases a day. We all love our kids, and we really want them to be safe. And it's scary to think about them getting sick and even dying from COVID. But how likely is that in reality? Several studies show that out of all the COVID deaths, only 5% are people under the age of 44. For kids under 17, that number drops to virtually zero. The risk is extremely minimal for kids. So what are the downsides of having kids wear masks? And today, we've heard some discussion about mental health and other aspects of just sanitary reasons of wearing masks. So a couple of other things I wanted to mention. So first of all, it's a logistical challenge. As one thing to ask a teenager to wear a mask, it's a whole different ballgame to get a seven-year-old kid to wear a mask. And I just can't even imagine what it's like to try and force a two-year-old kid to wear a mask. Now, imagine a daycare provider having to force masks on an entire room full of two-year-olds. We've all heard these horror stories of families being kicked off of planes because their kid refused to wear a mask. What if a kid refuses to wear a mask at daycare? Will they be kicked out? Will parents have to face losing their jobs to stay home with their kids? On the other hand, masks do have some health risks, including all the various varieties in 95 surgical masks and cloth masks. Some studies show that there's detrimental effects, including lower blood oxygenation, increasing levels of carbon dioxide, and so forth. And, you know, besides just, you know, those types of health concerns, there's also, you know, we've heard those sayings about like 70 to 93% of communication being nonverbal. And it was mentioned earlier, you know, that I don't think we should underestimate the effect of kids' faces and teachers' faces being covered that would impact that communication, which is so important in a classroom setting. So, in summary, I'm definitely concerned about the health and safety of my child, just like all the other parents in Douglas County. But there's no need to panic and force our kids to wear masks in school. And I support the Douglas County in taking this courageous step to opt out of the Tri-County Health Order.
Next person, Commissioner, is Dan White. Dan, you are unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Hey there. My name is Dan White. I live, that's, last name is DeCarlo, W-H-I-T-E. I live at 3967 Old Oak Street in Castle Rock. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share my views. I wish I could be there with you all. It sounds like maybe I'm the exception on the phone. I'm not on the phone because I'm not trying to, because I'm trying to be noble. By any means, I'm working. You all are inspiring. I have no idea if I've ever had COVID because I won't get tested. I agree with so much. I agree with so much of what's been said by the speakers before me. I hope my message comes across as respectful to those who disagree with me, but clearly communicates my passion for the shared freedoms we all ought to cherish. I do not consent to Tri-County's Health Order requiring the use of any medical products authorized under EAU. That includes masks. My children will not wear a mask at school and understand that this is not to thumb my nose at anyone who does want to wear a mask. It truly isn't. Everyone has the right to public school attendance without unwarranted interference by the school or other state actors in the parent-child relationship. Only the parent has the authority to decide the medical treatment for their child, which includes masks. And it's my exclusive right as a parent to inform consent and to decline, both for masks and any injection. No school has ever prohibited the use of a mask in school. Imagine if they did. But they haven't, and they shouldn't. That should be your choice. At the same time, there should be no mandate for a mask as well. That's my choice. This country is a constitutional republic. It guarantees protection of individual freedoms, liberties, and due process, everybody. This applies to our individual pursuit of, it applies to our individual pursuit of medical intervention and health practices. The school, guys, the school is not a hospital that we have all collectively checked in together and are subject all patients to equitable prescribed medical care. Our Constitution does not secure the government, let alone Tri-County Health, the power to impose forced equity in medical mandates and interventions, or the power to punish just heart-bonched. It just don't. So again, my consent has been removed for treating me or my children like we're patients in a hospital. I'm done. We will not comply with Tri-County Health Order. We do not consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. I have the next online attendee. I only see initials of S-L. As a reminder, please state your first and last name and spell your last name and address. Thank you. You are unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Shaughnessy Lagrimas, and I live in Castle Rock, Colorado.
Would you please spell your last name for us?
L-A-G-R-I-M-A-S. And that's M as in Mary.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. None of us have ever lived through a pandemic before. My viewpoint differs from the majority here, but it's still a valid opinion. And please don't laugh, as I didn't laugh at you. As far as kids being confused about changing guidelines, I think a lot has to do with how you explain things to kids. Kids understand a lot if you just talk to them on their level. My six-year-old, along with my 11-year-old, understands that things change, and health officials just have our best interest at heart. With freedom and choice, with freedom and choice comes responsibility. I'm not hearing anyone argue about peanut butter or parental discipline, and that's because those are health and safety issues, and we all understand that. Are you saying kids should bring peanut butter to school when a kid has a life-threatening allergy? Should a teacher not report possible abuse they suspect at home because it's parents' choice to discipline? A pandemic is no different. This isn't about choosing shoes or bedding. It's about saving lives. I am grateful that Tri-County isn't willing to take the risk on our kids dying because of COVID. I therefore support the mandate and hope it isn't overturned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Troy?
Okay, next we have Katie Webb. Katie, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And I apologize for my son in the background. My name is Katie Webb, and it's W-E-B-B. And I live at 15831 East Flying Quell Lane, Parker, Colorado 80134. First of all, I'm so grateful for this opportunity to speak. I was on the Tri-County Public Forum, open forum meeting, and every two minutes, I waited for my name to be called, heart pounding, ready to give my speech, and I never got the chance. And I was quite frustrated. So I'll be giving that speech here, but I've realized I'm preaching to the choir here, minus a few of the call-ins. I agree with all of you. I believe in freedom of choice. That should be up to the parents. You want a mask, your kid? Mask your kid. If you don't, you shouldn't be forced to. To start off, I want to let everyone know, there is a peaceful protest that we are going to be holding at the Douglas County School District Building in Castle Rock at 8:30 Monday morning. I will not be sending my daughter to school in a mask. I don't want her to be a public example, so I don't want to make her go in and be the only person wearing a mask. So I will be pulling her out of school. I'm taking her to this peaceful protest. We are going to be peaceful. And I would invite all parents to do the same. I urge you to pull your kids out of school. That will speak volumes. And teachers, too. We are fighting for teachers that have been pretty much forced to get the vaccine, and now they're masking up. So I just want to throw that out there. Please join us Monday morning at 8:30. Now, I'm so saddened that the Tri-County Health Department asked for our opinion and then completely ignored it. They went with the vast minority. They went with the 8%. The majority, the clear majority, does not want masks mandated, and our voices need to be heard. I don't know what you can do. I understand. I talked to our superintendent this morning. I've been holding a lot of meetings. And I understand that the school district is a completely different entity. It's not even connected. So you guys opt out of it. For Douglas County, it doesn't include our school district. So my plea to you, or my question, I guess, is how can you help us? How can you help Douglas County opt out of this? After talking to the superintendent, I realized, unfortunately, this is a legal issue. They're afraid of being held liable if they don't follow the Tri-County mandate. But I am urging him, and I'm urging all of you, to back me up on this and urge him as well, and the school board, to just have some courage and opt out of it. So the district has to opt out of it on their own. The school board has to. And I'm urging everyone to just opt out of it. They're not going to get sued for this because how many deaths have been in our district over this? Zero, from what I'm told. There's zero deaths. So I am begging people to stop looking at the infection rate. Kids get sick. That happens, and that's okay. It's good for our immune system. It builds our immune system. So stop looking at the infection rate and look at the death rate. And it's, so we should not be masking up for something that is not a threat to us. One of the callers mentioned common sense.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you see the timer?
Oh, I don't see it.
So you are out of time. If you could wrap it up, please.
Oh, I will, certainly. I just want to ask everyone to use common sense. This is a common sense matter. You can pull up your scientific studies. I'll pull up mine. They're going to be different, but it's common sense. The kids don't need masks. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next in line is Keely Gall. Hopefully, I pronounced your name correctly. Keely, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for your time. I speak in favor of the Commissioner's position today. A lot of times, I hear that when I think that we should have choices for masks, that I'm ignoring the science. But actually, I am a CPA, and data is extremely important as our root causes. The Douglas County deaths per the Tri-County website, which I have up in front of me, for 18 and under is one for the entire pandemic. The Douglas County deaths for all ages is only 276. For, that represents 0.07% of the population. So this is not something that our kids are actually affecting the health of the general population in droves. Additionally, my son contracted COVID-19 before we realized it was in the country, but it's been confirmed by his physicians. He got it in December of 2019, and consistent with the science, did not spread it to the rest of the house because kids are not efficient and effective spreaders. Finally, 74.3% of Douglas County is vaccinated, and the estimates are that 9% have also contracted COVID. So we are nearing or at herd immunity. In my household, all of us who are eligible to be vaccinated got the vaccine because we have loved ones with health issues, and we decided to be a protection to them. So my son has natural immunity, and the three of us have vaccinated immunity. So a mask for all of us is actually doing no additional good. According to Johns Hopkins and the CDC, breakthrough infections and reinfections are 3% or less, maybe nearing 1%. So a mask mandate doesn't make sense for us. Somebody mentioned the mask mandates and the Spanish flu. I'll remind that person that the Spanish flu went on for three years. So I think actually we maybe should have learned something from the Spanish flu, that putting masks on actually prolongs a pandemic. We have not done that sense, and we have not experienced the same sense. My concern about the Douglas County email that we received only two and a half hours after the Tri-County Health vote was that somehow the school district couldn't ignore the fact that zero of the Douglas County Health Board members voted yes, and that our own commissioners don't back it. So I'm confused that our school board would be forced to follow the decisions of six people who don't reside in the county. Finally, I learned on that TCHD call that on May 26, Children's Hospital did declare a mental health epidemic. And I can share that our son shared with his pediatrician, we thought he was doing beautifully with masks as other We thought he was doing beautifully with masks, as other people have mentioned. But he shared with his pediatrician and I at his well-child checkup that actually he had had suicidal thoughts because of those. So I really think that there is a situation here where the mitigation efforts are worse than the disease itself. Thank you so much.
Keely, before-- Keely-- Keely-- Before you hang up, would you please provide us with your name? Spell your last name and your address, please?
Oh, yes, sorry. It's G.O.H.L., and I'm at 762 Tarpon Place.
Thank you, ma'am. Troy, is there anyone else online?
Yes, we're developing quite a list. I will turn it back over to you when we've reached the number 10. Next in line will be Daniel Park. Daniel, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Daniel Park. Last name P.A.R.K. Living 11290 Mission Walk Street in Parker. I am for support of the Tri-County Health and the mask mandate for the public school. Just like everyone else in the building and those online, I'm just as tired and weary of this pandemic. But out of consideration of others, not only for the protection of my kids, but also for the protection of other kids and for the mask mandate for our children. I understand the frustration, and I'm not here to call for telling anyone how to raise their child and make their health choices. But I just call for us to-- For those who follow the Lord, to consider others significant than themselves. And that's what I ask for our commissioners to realize. Just as someone stated, the data is true. There's only been one death of-- From COVID of kids under the age of 11. 276 deaths in our county because of COVID. In my opinion, that is one death of a child too many, and that 276 deaths too many because of this pandemic. So just ask for the commissioners to realize, yes, the data is there. Yes, I do understand that it is minimal effect. But if the mask does prevent someone else from getting the COVID-- If it prevents another child having long-lasting symptoms from it, if it prevents another death, a child or adult, I am okay to temporarily wear a mask. So I ask for the Douglas commissioners to not opt out, but to hold on to the mandate that the Tri-County Health has put upon us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Troy?
Next in line will be Jerry Krieg, or Craig. Jerry, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Weird spelling my last name. It's K.R.I.E.G.E.R. First name Jerry. And I live in a pinerie. I'm not going to give my address just for security concerns. So just so everyone understands what side of the page I'm on-- Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. That's what this country is based on. I thank the commission for setting this meeting up, and I wish I could be there today like the other gentleman. I'm also at work, and I'm trying to break away so I can speak my piece on it, too. My son will not be wearing a mask when he goes to school. Last year was crazy. He got prescribed glasses. The mask would always fog up his glasses. He would try to, you know, get the fog off his glasses with his fingers. It would smear the glasses. He couldn't see. You know, it's sad. I'm a veteran. I've taken an oath for being in the military. I've taken an oath as a first responder in more than one type of job within the emergency management system there. It is ridiculous that we have to fight for simple little things like this. We have to fight for our children. You know, when they turn 18, they have to sign up for the draft, and they go and fight for us. We're already sending kids off, you know, to harm's way when they get old enough. Well, I'm going to stand my ground, and I'm not going to allow my child to, you know, be a person that has to go to school and wear a mask. It is absolutely ridiculous. When I go and I drop him off, he's six years old, and I see preschoolers, two, three years old, wearing a mask, it's a sign of oppression, in my opinion. And that's not what I took an oath for as a veteran. That's not what I took an oath for, to protect our freedoms and our liberty as a first responder as well. It's appalling. I want to thank all of the families and all the people there supporting the decision to opt out of this order. To-- Again, I wish I was there. It's nice to see all these families there and just supporting one another. I give you guys a round of applause from sitting here at work, and thank you very much for that. The only other thing I want to add is, you know, if the flu vaccine works, then why do I get sick every year? You know? They guesstimate that every year. They try to figure out what strain of flu is going to happen. That doesn't always work, but yet, you know, you have some guy on here, some little individual saying that that does work. It does not effectively work. I did case studies. I was actually a part of a placebo study through Children's Hospital, where they were testing the vaccine. And I actually got the real vaccine before it was available to the masses there. And, you know, I ended up taking hydrochloroquine and, you know, I kind of did it because other people are kind of curious about it. And a lot of the guys I work with, a lot of people I work with, they were hesitant getting the vaccine as well, because, you know, you hear about the heart problems and all the other underlying issues that may happen. Well, one of my best friends, 24-year-old-- 24-year-old actually got a heart attack-- A walking heart attack, where, you know, he had chest pain and went to the doctor the next day. And said, "Yeah, dude, you had a heart attack." 24-years-old, most in shape guy I know, you know? And he's dealing with that issue there. So, you know, with that said, I'm not, you know, against anti-vaxing or anything like that, but I am against mandating children to wear masks. It's freedom of choice. That's where we need to be. And I thank this commission for putting this meeting on. And thank you for everyone for showing up in person as well.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. Troy?
All right. Number 10 in our batch of online is Kurt Zaner. Kurt, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Kurt Zaner, Z.A.N.E.R. I live at 7135 South Polo Ridge Drive. And I have two kids in Douglas County schools-- A three and a five-year-old. And just kind of anecdotally to start off, my wife, who's very pregnant-- Nine months pregnant, and I both got COVID about a month ago. Hit us both pretty hard. It was a rough 10 days for me and 14 days for her. Both of our kids were snuggling with us for the entire two, three weeks. And I think one got a temperature of 99 degrees one day, and neither had another symptom. And this was the Delta variant. So that's anecdotally speaking on how much risk these kids are from COVID. But, you know, don't listen to me. You know, we like to listen to the experts. And two of them wrote an op-ed in the Wall Street Journal recently. Dr. McRey, who's a professor at John Hopkins School of Medicine, and Dr. Meisner, the chief of pediatric infectious diseases at Tufts Children's Hospital. And in their article, they point out a lot of science and a lot of data. And their conclusion is that masking kids in school for eight hours a day, five days a week, is a harmful proposition that's not in line with the science. Because the reality is that children under 11 face a higher mortality rate from the seasonal flu and RSV than COVID. Yet, we don't mask them every year. Many speakers have made this point. Kids have a better chance of getting struck by lightning or dying in a car crash than dying from COVID, according to data and science. And there's no new data to just to suggest that the Delta variant is any more dangerous to children. And the physical harm of wearing a mask and breathing in their own carbon dioxide all day long are significant, including hypoxia-- Not getting enough oxygen-- Hyperkania-- Getting too much CO2. And that leads to headaches, shortness of breath, mental confusion, and other conditions. And they've even shown that prolonged mouth breathing, which is caused by masks, can alter facial development and cause mouth deformities and an elongated face. So when we're talking about the health of our children and the risks they pose, I think it's an easy decision. And when you factor in the fact that mask-wearing is a huge impediment for developmental learning, as children can't see the teachers and other students' faces by the time when they're learning how to emote and communicate and how to signal fear or confusion or happiness-- I mean, seeing people speak is a building block of phonetic development. And for disabled children, the mask-wearing is even more of an impediment. And you look at psychologically, you know, teaching our children as young as two that the world is sick, and they have something to fear from everybody, you know? That harm may not be able to be undone. There was a study in the Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics that found children rarely transmitted disease to adults. And that was based on a study of 90,000 students. And look, any teacher who's concerned about the disease has already had the opportunity to get vaccinated. Same with parents. And as many have pointed out, parents that want to have masks on their children are able to do so. So thank you for the time. That's all I'm going to take. I hope-- I'm very grateful of the comments so far and that the committee and the board is considering these comments fully. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zaner. We're going to come back to the hearing room. First up is Kelly Nixon, Denny Joe Smith, Jasmine LaBarani, Anthony and Amber-- Last name starts with a Z. I can't read the writing. Kelly Nixon. If you can give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Kelly Nixon, N.I.X.O.N. and 3988-- That is not the right address. 5131 Bloom Place. I come to you as a Douglas County resident and a business owner. My children are old and out of school. But I believe that our rights as Americans are being taken away from us right now, and this is something that I need to speak up. I agree with all the points that have been made by parents that this is affecting their children being in school. I would say, if I have the right to take the breath away from a baby by getting an abortion under the premise that it is my body, my choice, I do not believe that the government has the right to tell me to put a mask on. It is my body. It is my choice. They are my children. It's my choice. What's next? Mandatory vaccines? If they can tell us to do this with our body, why can't-- Where is it going to stop? I choose not to get a vaccine. That's my choice. My husband and my brother are both soldiers. They fought for our country, and they fought for our freedoms. And I certainly hope, as an American, we continue to have those freedoms and not have our government control our bodies.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hello, my name is Denny Joe Smith, S.M.I.T.H. I live at 11588 Pine Hill Way in Parker. I am a Children's Hospital employee that has worked there for almost 20 years. I am a respiratory therapist and a sleep tech. And I have not seen the hospital overrun at all with children's cases. I cannot speak for adults. But my job during the pandemic was not getting pulled back to respiratory therapy. It was chasing geese off the lawn and painting the outpatient pavilions. We had beds opened up for adult patients that we could take in, that we never had to take in. I have a child in fourth grade and in sixth grade. I feel like the sixth grader who is in middle school is being discriminated against. Now you have sixth, seventh, and eighth, but only sixth graders are going to be wearing masks, which is segregation. When my child does take a mask off last year in third grade, he was singled out, so there's bullying. I think you're separating people again with wearing masks. My child has difficulty with speech. I cannot hear with the mask on. I have hearing aids. I can't hear what people are saying. So if I have coping mechanisms to work around that, children do not. So now, my child is behind in speech, in comprehension, in reading. What are we going to do this year? Have another wasted year of trying to teach? I work full-time. So does my husband. I don't have that choice of leaving my kid at home and doing school. I don't have that choice. But if those people have the choice to take their child out or wear a mask, why do we not have the choice of not wearing a mask and having a good school year? I don't believe in the masks. I don't believe you are going to be able to teach your children. Everyone's going to go behind in every subject. And I don't believe that we should not have that choice. We should have the choice to say, "No, my child is not wearing a mask." I didn't see a huge pandemic surge at children's. I've been there for 20 years in October. I was a painter. I was not pulled back in respiratory. These kids are not getting affected. The ones that I saw that were affected were chronic illness kids who already had issues, who were already on ventilators, who already had chronic lung infection issues. I believe it should be a choice.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Lakhani. That's L.A.K.H.A.N.I. And I live at 8116 Sweetwater Road in Lontry. I feel like I'm the only one from Lontry here. But first of all, I want to thank you commissioners, again, for holding this meeting to consider opting out of the mask mandate for small children and for continuing to fight for our freedoms and our rights. My family thanks you for making that a priority for Douglas County. We have a daughter that is 11 and a son that is 5. My husband and I are against mask mandates. To clarify, not against mask recommendations, but against mandating that kids ages 2 to 11 wear masks at schools or childcare facilities. If this was truly about health, they would be mandating food junk choices out of our kids' school cafeterias, since obesity-- Since obesity is the leading cause of COVID-19 hospitalizations, especially among those under the age of 65, according to the studies. 50.2% of those hospitalized were obese, and 27.8% were overweight. Cumulative, that's 78% of those hospitalized were obese and overweight. Since when do we place this burden on our children to protect the life of irresponsible adults? And I want to address the comment that I keep hearing that unvaccinated, unmasked are the ones creating the new variants. According to this study that I have here, it's called imperfect vaccination can enhance the transmissions of highly virulent pathogens. I'm going to just read the abstract. It says-- They're asking the question, "Could some vaccines drive the evolution of a more virulent pathogens? Conventional wisdom is that natural selection will remove highly lethal pathogens if host death greatly reduces transmission. Vaccines that keep hosts alive but still allow transmission could thus allow very virulent strains to circulate in a population." This is what we're seeing with these vaccines. Here-- Here, we show experimentally-- So they did the study, and it's basically saying that our diet-- You can go find this study. Our data shows that anti-decease vaccines that do not prevent transmission can create conditions that promote the emergence of pathogen strains that cause more severe disease in unvaccinated hosts. So if we're going to mandate masks, maybe the vaccinated ones should be the ones wearing the masks. I wish you guys could have seen my daughter's face yesterday when we told her that we were going to have to pull her out. She was crying. She was begging us. But I will not stand against my daughter or my son wearing masks at school. And I will keep fighting. I will keep fighting for their freedoms and for their rights. And I will be at that protest. Thank you very much.
Anthony? If you could give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please?
It's Anthony Zambai. And that's Zulu Alpha Mike Bravo Alpha India, 11906 Barrett Street in Parker. All right. What we're talking about here is it's not saving lives. It's authoritarianism. The authoritarians don't care about saving lives. If they did, Andrew Cuomo and Gretchen Whitmer would have been investigated, at the very least, for the thousands of people they killed by sending them into the nursing homes. If the authoritarians cared about saving lives, they would have figured out how to evacuate 10,000-plus Americans from Afghanistan last week. If they cared about saving lives, they proclaim from the mountaintops that our kids are not at risk from dying from this virus. It isn't about saving lives, and it never was. It's about spreading fear, getting us to give up our rights, and getting control over yet another aspect of our lives. It's about conditioning all of us, and especially controlling people like you commissioners, who have been granted some power over us, to be okay with giving up this control. I'm asking you to not give in to the fear. I'm asking you to take the same path that countless other counties and school districts in this country have taken. We citizens of Douglas County are not afraid. We elected you to not be afraid. We elected you to not be afraid. Don't give in to the fear, don't trample our rights. Thank you.
Amber Zambai, Z-A-M-B-A-I, 11906 Barrett Street. Public speaking is not my thing, I apologize. I am proud to be a member of Douglas County. It's a county that typically values freedom and choice, a county that is thinking about opting out. And that's awesome. I am in favor of opting out of the tri-county decision. I believe we should have the freedom to choose. There have been a lot of really great points made today, and honestly, I don't have a great deal to add to that. We've heard so many amazing speakers and statistics and facts. I do believe masks are not good for our children's learning. I do believe they're good for their children's health. Our children, excuse me. They cannot read facial expressions, they cannot learn facial expressions, they have been trouble speaking, they cannot hear their teachers, they cannot be heard. I've heard between my children and my nieces who live with me and their friends and their parents that children do not like to raise their hand because they feel they cannot be heard, that they cannot hear their teacher, and so they simply choose to not pay attention. They're having, they're distracted. We live in an amazing county where parents have choices. They can send their kids to school with masks, they can send their children to school without masks, they can go to e-learning, they can go to public schools, private schools, charter schools, you name it. I mean, we've got choices. I feel like we should have the choice, we should be able to choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. The next five are Tara Heidel, Lauren Rilling, Daniel Hackett, Stacy Austin, and Tim Brown. And again, if you can give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Tara Heidel, H-E-I-D-E-L. And my address is 8395 East Cleveland Road in Franktown. So I appreciate the time today, and elections matter. And I voted for each, each one of you, and so I appreciate the time today to give us the time to listen to us. And Representative Basely, I appreciate that you are my representative. I want to publicly thank Dr. Fielding and the other Kim, I don't remember her last name, I apologize.
Muramoto.
What is it?
Muramoto.
Thank you. And then gentleman, and I forget his name as well, but he had to abstain because he was a, I guess, an employee of one of the districts, I would assume, in Douglas County. But I want to specifically thank Dr. Fielding for her courage to speak the way that she did during the tri-county board of health meeting. She said exactly what needed to be said. And if you haven't heard it, go back and look at it. If you need a link, I'll be happy to provide it to you. That unfortunately, the tri-county health board has been politicized, and they are weaponizing our healthcare, they are weaponizing our children, and they are weaponizing, they are becoming pawns. And our children are not pawns. My children will not be pawns. My children are middle schoolers and high schoolers, so they are not affected by this order, but I'm still going to fight, and that's what I'm here to do today. So I appreciate Dr. Fielding and our other Kim standing up and representing us the way that the majority of the Douglas County citizens voiced their concern, and they did what was right. Unfortunately, the other two counties and their representatives did not. So I don't know if any of you appointed them, if you did, I appreciate that. But it's obvious that tri-county health does not represent this district anymore. They do not represent what we stand here for. And so I am going to ask for you to get us, not only out of this mandate, which I know that you will do today, get us out of tri-county health. I know there's, there's been some contention. I think there's been some contention. I haven't been as involved in this room, I will continue to be involved, okay? And I will be watching, I am here to support you. I don't want to be a single voter issue, but if I need to be, I will be, okay? They don't, they don't represent us anymore. And I just want to read, I'm completely lost in what I wanted to say. I want to read a letter, I think, I think that you all sent, and if I, if it was not from you, please, please correct me. But Douglas County will now stay within the three-county public health district along with Aborho, Adams, and Adams County for at least through December 31st, 2022, while we collectively continue to examine our partnership. Now, I urge you to continue to collectively see if you want to stay in this, this department of health, because they do not represent, represent us at all. And if I could, just let me say one last thing. Even after you presumably today do the right thing, unfortunately, Douglas County School District still has the authority under the Board of Education to continue with this mandate, as which I'm sure they will, okay? If you don't know the Douglas County Board of Education, come Tuesday night, Tuesday night is the next meeting, offer public comment, because that is where our fight is going to be, all right? If you are in public school. Private schools, they can opt out, charter schools can opt out, but we are under the direction of the Board of Education. And so that is our next fight. And Board of Directors, I hope you're listening, because this is coming to you on Tuesday, and we will not stand for it anymore, okay? You only have so much authority, the next fight is on Tuesday. Be there.
Lauren Rilling.
Hi, I'm Lauren Rilling, R-I-L-L-I-N-G. Address is 1685 Spring Water Place in Highlands Ranch. I first want to just thank the Board of County Commissioners for holding this meeting and taking the time to hear from all of us. I have every confidence that you're going to do the right thing and opt out of the tri-county health department's tyrannical and abusive mandate. I also love that more parents and community members showed up than expected and that you had to open up the overflow seating, because it shows that you should never underestimate what the mama bears and dads are willing to do to protect our children from abuse. And I fully believe that that is the appropriate term for tri-county health's mandate. Politically motivated health bureaucrats don't have any more legitimacy to make health decisions for a child than that child's own parents. In fact, it's quite the opposite. That aside, consider these facts. One, all adults have had ample opportunity to get the vaccine. Two, we know that children are not super-spreaders, they don't get adults sick with COVID. And three, COVID-19 poses far less risk of death to children than even the flu. To briefly respond to the comment that masks are akin to wearing seat belts, that is delusional, they are akin to making your kid wear a football helmet 24/7 for fear a rock will hit them in the head. The New England Journal of Medicine reported that last year Sweden kept schools open with no masks. It was business as usual at school for 1.9 million children. Want to know how many children died of COVID? Zero, not even one. This alone should put the mask debate to rest. If masks really were proven effective at reducing viral infections, if they actually kept children safer, and if they had no negative consequences, we would have had kids masking up for school decades ago to keep them safe from the flu and other viruses that are far more threatening to them. But they don't benefit our children, and they do have negative consequences. Masks are not only inconvenient and annoying, but they are detrimental to the psychological and developmental well-being of our children. Many parents and child psychologists have spoken out concerned that children are growing up without being able to see people's facial expressions. Masks stifle both verbal and nonverbal communication, masks stoke fear and anxiety, masks are not normal. They are uncomfortable and distracting in learning environments, they do nothing beneficial for children, but they can absolutely do harm. I'm not here to request permission to opt out of muzzling my children and having them used as political propaganda. I am here to respectfully but clearly inform you that my children will not be wearing masks on Monday, because I am their mother, and it is not only my right, but my highest responsibility to protect them from harm. Thank you very much.
Daniel Hackett.
Hello, I am Daniel Hackett, H-A-C-K-E-T-T. My address is PO Box 5394, Inglewood, Colorado, 80155. And I'm a Douglas County High School graduate. And part of my background, after high school, I went and studied engineering, worked as an engineering consultant, dealing with heating, ventilation, air conditioning, engineering controls. And very few people actually speak about engineering controls. A lot of people just speak about masks. With engineering controls, it's understood certain sizes of viruses that can be captured, different bacteria that can be captured or what cannot be captured. And the virus in question, the SARS-CoV-2, is considered 1 UM, also known as 100 nanometers, or considered 0.1 micron. Micron is very small. And to give you a concept, for the HEPA filters, they start off at a rating on filtration at 0.3 microns, so three times larger than the alleged virus that we're dealing with, associated with masks on children. And considering that some of the masks people are wearing, the cloth masks, you know, it has no ability of filtering that, no masks have any ability of filtering a virus, because it's a teeny tiny little thing. It's called a little guy in the engineering controls world. Now surgical masks are rated at 30 UM, and the virus is at 1 UM. The surgical masks, you know, they're worn in hospitals, so it avoids splashes, but it's not stopping viruses. And if a doctor sneezes while surgery takes place, the air goes backwards or down, it doesn't go onto the patient on the operation table. Considering surgical masks are at 30 UM, you know, 28 of these little guys could pretty much hold hands with their spiked protein and walk through the porous surface. And the idea that the cloth mask has anything to do, those would be greater than 30 UM in size. Now, since there was an emergency declared, emergency use authorization took place, and that includes masks, face shields, and respirators. The FDA rolled back the certified good manning passuring process to reduce the quality of the products that came out to meet the demand. Considering that it's all emergency use authorized, you know, there is actual laws that have been violated, including Title 21, United States Code 360 BBB-3E1AII133, and specifically the third one reads, "associated with all emergency use products," which includes masks, vaccines, face shields, and respirators, which is N95, those are respirators supposed to be fitted with, "of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product, of the consequences, if any, the refusing administration of the product and of alternatives to the product are available, and of their benefits and risks." So this speaks about informed consent, individual informed consent. There is also a lack of that that's been occurring. Any mandate is not a law. All orders are not law.
And Mr. Hackett, you're over time, if you could wrap it up, please.
Thank you. And one of the factors that have been occurring that can be measured is how most people who are dying from a virus have deficiencies associated with vitamin D, zinc, and even vitamin C. So the idea of just focusing on masks without looking at engineering controls, which is increasing outside air volume for air changes per hour, you know, this space might have six air changes per hour. A OR room has 12 to 15 air changes per hour. So the risks are completely different between a hospital and just a space like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett. Is it Stacy Austin?
My name is Stacy Austin, A-U-S-T-I-N. My address is 6272 South Kellerman Court, Aurora, Colorado, 80016. So I've lived all over the US, I mean, outside the US, and I love this country, because in the United States of America, we value freedom. We've always been a people free to live our lives and to decide what is best for our health. Our constitution is based on restricting the government from making rules against our freedoms. So I'm shocked to find myself today running out of the gym to come down here and talk to you guys, to try to get you to let me have freedom as a parent to make medical decisions about my child. Two years ago, my daughter had a double concussion that left her unable to do math without severe headaches. I spent months working with traditional doctors following the science, unable to heal her brain. Not knowing how to help her, I sought out a functional medicine doctor who was able to heal her brain and get her headaches to stop. That same, same, those same practitioners that helped me get her where she didn't have headaches and wasn't throwing up and was able to read without the words jumping off the page. Advised me that the mask did not lower her oxygen level, because I went in all excited, I'm like, I put her on the O2 oximeter and her, with the mask, and it didn't go down. And they said, that's not the problem. And then when you hook her up to a heart graph, her heart goes into distress. So you're putting extra stress on her heart. So last year, I made the decision to homeschool her because of that data and where she was in her healing. I am an engineer and a firm believer in science and data. Over the last two years, I have learned that healing can come from outside of studies based on science. I've also learned that science can be polluted by politics. We've become a society where science is dictated by the scientist and not the data. I'm also asking that you allow parents who want to wear masks to allow them, because I can guarantee you right now, if my child had diabetes or an autoimmune disease, based on what I've learned the last two years, I would be here asking you to let that child wear a mask. My little girl has worked so hard to get her ability to do math back. Today, she returned to school so excited, not only because she's returning to her first day of school, but she's been returning one to two grade levels ahead in math. So I am begging you not to take that away from her, because I won't send her with you, make her wear a mask. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Tim Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I live at 107 Birch Avenue in Castle Rock. First of all, I want to thank each one of you three who called me when I was in a hospital bed for four months, three hospitals, recovering from COVID, which I contracted while following the protocols and wearing a mask. Just remember that. Your care and your concern, your personal care and concern, shows that you care for me and for the citizens of Douglas County on a personal level. So thank you very much, I really appreciated that. I raised three children here over the last 27 years in Douglas County. And my background, career-wise, covers nuclear physics, rocket science, and computer science. So I have just a little bit of standing to talk about what I'm going to talk about here. I didn't just follow the science, I did the science as a curious engineer, okay? I came up with a little brochure, which I've handed out to a few people, which I think is appropriate for this setting. And pictures are worth a thousand words. So this two little circle and a dot here show the size of a coronavirus, the average coronavirus spore size, which is .125 nanometers. The circle around it, the blue circle, is the average pore size of .3 nanometers in an N95 mask. And for those of you in TV land, here it is. And for you in the audience, here it is. Just take a look at that picture. When we breathe in and out 50,000 times a day, or whatever it is, we breathe out aerosolized stuff, which could include a virus spore. It's going to fly right through that mask. And who seals up their mask all the way around all the edges? Nobody. I would like to say that masks are almost, almost useless in terms of stopping this virus. So in the background behind these masks are that they were invented to create, to prevent a doctor or nurse's sweat and saliva, and a cough or sneeze droplets, which are thousands of times larger, from getting into an open surgical wound or incision. Surgical masks were intended to be worn for a maximum, maximum of 20 to 30 minutes within 10 feet of a seriously ill patient in a hospital room setting. Surgical masks were not intended to stop virus spores, and that fact is stated on the box of the mask, every single one. Virus spores in general are killed by the sun's use. N95 means it'll talk, stop 95% of the, of the material that it's designed to do so. What about the other 5%? What about the cloth mask or the bandana that doesn't stop hardly anything?
Mr. Brown, you're out of time. If you could wrap it up, please.
Sure. So I'd like to say, then, in terms of our children, who, as many people have already said before, have practically zero risk of contracting the virus or spreading the virus or dying from the virus, this mask mandate by THC is, or TCH, is practically useless. And I advise you to go ahead with your resolution to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We're going to switch to back online. Troy, do we have anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. Next in line would be M. Oster. You are unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm on a WebEx call from home, but it was very important for me to be here today. So thank you so much for giving us the opportunity as parents to speak for our children. First of all, I just want to appreciate, say thank you to all the parents who have taken their time out today to be there. It does not go unnoticed that you were there. So thank you very much. I have a sophomore and a senior at Legend High School here in Parker, Colorado. Again, my name is Mandy. Last name is Oster, 23001, Cleveland Drive, Parker, Colorado, 80138. I forgot to state that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So my senior has been dealing with COVID since he was a sophomore in high school. He is now a senior. I know our high school students are not being affected at this moment for a mask mandate, but I stand with all parents in having personal choice for our children. I will be standing there on the 23rd with all parents at the meeting as well. It is for personal choice for our kids to choose to wear a mask or not. When the year started, I can't even tell you the first day of school when they had a rally at Legend High School, and my son sent me pictures, who was a senior, of all the kids smiling and laughing, and not one of them that I saw in the picture was wearing a mask. And I will remind you, at this time, it is still recommended, not required, but those kids could all choose to wear a mask. And again, from what I saw in the picture, not one of them was wearing a mask. My son had COVID right when it came out. He, to this day, and he's 17, still has the COVID antibodies. And I'm very frustrated that these antibodies are not even being recognized throughout this COVID time. I know people that had COVID, wore a mask, now had the vaccine, now have COVID again and are wearing masks. The vaccine, the COVID masks, they are not working. Last year, my son went through a major mental depression and almost committed suicide. I will tell you the mental effects from COVID are way worse than anything that's going on with COVID itself. I have teacher friends who, as of today, are crying on their way to work and from home. They're struggling to do their job and to teach these kids. They can't even fathom this mask mandate going back into the elementary school setting. As parents, we want a normal school year for our kids. For my son, who is a senior in high school, who has missed out on most of his high school years due to COVID, I want a normal year for him. I want a normal year for all of our kids. I don't speak just for my child on this call. I speak for all of our children. I am begging you that you give our choice to have our kids be in masks or not. I stand with all parents that I've heard today that if masks are mandated, even at the high school level eventually, or the elementary school, my children will not be wearing a mask.
Thank you, Ms. Oster. Troy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next in line will be Tyler Holden. Tyler, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Tyler Holden, last name H O L D E N. Address 10039 Heatherwood Place in Islands Ranch. So thank you, Commissioners, for your bravery in this whole matter. I wanted to share some stuff that I emailed to the school board that I think is relevant in this conversation. I have not heard back from them on this, which I think is telling to their stance on this. But we've heard a lot of these stats before from other members, and so I'm going to get to some new statistics on this. So the issue at hand here, in my opinion, is the concern over the health and safety of masks on our kids. Nobody here is doubting whether COVID is real or not real and has affected some people. But to be clear, the risk is not credible for children. However, what is a credible risk is a weakened immune system caused by breathing through masks all day. So this information is from the Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health, published in April of this year, still stands unretracted. It is a compilation of 109 publications of studies done on the effectiveness of masks and their risks. So I'm going to read something from their conclusion. "Our review of the literature shows that both healthy and sick people can experience mask-induced exhaustion syndrome, which, with typical changes in symptoms that are often observed in combination, such as increase in breathing dead space volume, increase in breathing resistance, increase in blood carbon dioxide, decrease in blood oxygen saturation, increase in heart rate, increase in blood pressure, decrease in cardiopulmonary capacity, increase in respiratory rate, shortness of breath and difficulty breathing, headache, dizziness, feeling hot and clammy, decreased ability to concentrate, decreased ability to think, drowsiness, decrease in empathy perception, impaired skin barrier function with itching, acne, skin lesions, and irritation, overall perceived fatigue and exhaustion." Okay, that's from wearing a mask. Those are studies of actual science and data. Now, compare and contrast that with the CDC's studies on their website where they cite and source a study with the following, and I'm not kidding on this. Two hairstylists, two, 382 self-reported Navy service members on the USS Theodore, 124 Beijing households. Right, that's the data that they're using to force this mandate on our kids. It's unacceptable. It's ridiculous. Right? Now, we've also heard some of these things that relates to mental, emotional health, learning disabilities, et cetera. Two separate studies, peer-reviewed, 2007, 2009, speak to the importance of reading facial expressions. They confirm that our children learn about empathy from looks of care or concern and how we learn to discern who to trust and not trust. How many of you have thought about the kids, or the impact on kids' emotional and mental health when they can't see a teacher or friend's smiling face, or when the teacher can't see the loneliness or frustration on a student's face and come to their aid?
Mr. Holden.
Instead, we have kids hiding behind masks.
You're out of time. If you could wrap it up, please.
Certainly. So did you know that following the Spanish Flu, where masks were also mandated, we saw a rise in suicides in this country? Right, how many more deaths are going to result from suicides? And I'll wrap with this. According to the 1948 Geneva Declaration, updated in 2017, every doctor vows to put the health and dignity of his patients first, and even under threat not to use medical knowledge to violate human and civil liberties. Period. Right? We are violating human and civil liberties in the name of science, which is fake and not actually accurate. Right? Let's do what's right, give choice and freedom to the families on how to protect their children. If you want a mask, mask. If you don't, don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Next in line is RJ. RJ, you are now unmuted. Whoops. Go ahead. Whoops. Unable to unmute RJ. We will come back. Next in line is Stacy. Stacy, go ahead.
Yes, hello. This is Stacy Jacobson. My last name is J A C O B S E N, and I am at 9739 Bay Hill Drive in Longtree. First off, I support opting out of the mask mandate. I, I'm for mask choice. I thank you for this opportunity, and I thank you guys for standing up for us, the people here in Douglas County. It means a lot. I really support and agree with all the points that have already been made by those who agree with mask choice. So I'm not going to rehash all that. I would like to make a point that I don't believe has been made yet, and that's about fairness. Last year, public school kids had to wear masks while charter school kids and private school kids did not have to wear masks. We should have data. We should have information about whether or not these masks actually work. Were there tons of outbreaks among children from public school, or from private schools and from charter schools, overrunning our hospitals because they had COVID outbreaks right, left, and center? No! This is not fair. This is simply attacking children in the, in the public schools. We are the only ones who have to wear masks from ages 2 through 11. If this is truly going to help everyone, then why not all the schools? Because it doesn't work. It doesn't help. So please overturn this. Please give us the option of opting out. Because if the Douglas County School District really is for education equity, like they say, then why don't they give our kids the opportunity to be equal to those in public school and charter school? So again, I thank you very much for your time, and I just ask that you will support the will of the people and vote to give us the opportunity to have mask choice. And I give up the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy. Troy.
All right. Thank you. I'm still trying to unmute RJ, unable to, so we'll try again after Constantine. Constantine, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Sure. My name is Constantine Kokolis, K O K O L I S, Hookdale Avenue, Parker, Colorado. Commissioners, residents, I identify as an American, a Douglas County resident, and a responsible and informed parent. Wanted to just make a couple points, since most of what I've wanted to say was already said. I'm for mask choice. First, I want to let you know that I witnessed some of the most unorganized, unprofessional, and scientifically biased comments from tri-county health board members that I have ever seen, not including the Douglas County representatives. How we could possibly justify being part of that organization with its biased, unelected bureaucrats who have more power than our own elected leadership is beyond me. Specifically, they refuse to look at the appropriate local data from our county school districts where last year masking was implemented and still resulted in COVID cases because children simply do not have the right masks. And even if they did, they don't know how to wear them correctly. And, you know, most of them can't even afford the proper masks anyway. Comparing mask efficacy studies, and I heard some of the funnier ones, but researchers are looking at nurse mask-wearing, trained adult mask-wearing, and saying that those studies in any way should be used to say child mask-wearing is effective is ludicrous. How many of these supposed experts would allow a group of masked two-year-olds taking a field trip into a surgical suite during an open-heart surgery? None. Why? Because inappropriate mask-wearing is useless and protects nobody. However, those masks could certainly decrease the oxygen these kids will be able to breathe in. They impact mental health, heart health, and there are many, many studies, and those are conclusive, brain and heart health injuries in our children can last their entire lives. Additionally, the current, up-to-date localized data of persons in our county who have been vaccinated, along with all those who have had COVID already and now have natural immunity, was also thrown aside by these self-professed tri-county experts in favor of national data and what was read on CDC and other national organizational websites. This broad approach to a local issue is not supported in local health mandate creation. Keep in mind, there's no state mandate. The only reason you would have a local mandate when no state mandate exists would be if the local data is far worse than state averages, and it is not. Ignoring localized data implying our county is worse off than the rest of the state is absolutely negligent, my point of view. Going backwards from mask choice will have devastating effects, and I truly feel that our children will not be able to handle going back to school next week with suffocating, abusive masking. Masks that will not be more beneficial than the downsides, downside of causing mental health emergencies and oxygen deprivation. Let none of us here forget the total count of suicides, attempted suicides, and suicide ideation cases that occurred in Douglas County versus the COVID critical cases and deaths in this county. Numbers that aren't even close enough to document or compare. This is not the plague. You will not continue to harm my children, and we will not comply. Opt out of tri-county mask mandate, and then opt out of tri-county health altogether. Thank you all.
Thank you, Constantine. Troy, who's next?
All right, we're going to move to Steven Tyler, and then we'll try RJ again. Steven, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Steven Tyler, T Y L E R. I'm at 488 East Antara Way, Parker, Colorado. I have two children in the Douglas County school system that are nine-year-old twins. And they've been masking throughout this pandemic, and they've done just fine. I think that children take their cues from their parents. If you are anti-mask, your children take cues from that. And I realize that there are certain conditions in which masking may be difficult due to developmental issues and things like that. But the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as every other major medical organization, including the local chapters in Colorado, have provided this guidance as the best measure to limit the spread of transmission within schools. They take into account the mental health, the potential effects of mask on our children, and of weight those risks and benefits. These are the same physicians and doctors that you trust when you take them to the hospital for a broken arm, or other illnesses and viruses, or cancer. These are the same doctors that treat your children. They have your children's best interest in, in mind. Public health is not a democratic issue. We are laypeople. I am a layperson. I trust the physicians to give us the best advice and guidance. I have pandemic, pandemic fatigue like everybody else. I suggest, if you want unbiased information, go to Children'sHospitalColorado.org. Look at their information. Look at their studies. Look at their resources. These are the facts. A mask, my child wearing a mask and your child not wearing a mask does not protect my child. My child wearing a mask protects your child. If your child is not wearing a mask and is sitting across from my child and coughs and sneezes, those droplets dip on my child. That is not okay. And with regards to effectiveness of masks, the virus does not come out in just little microns. It is in droplets. Please read the information on the children's website. It fully describes it. It describes how masks are effective in decreasing the transmission rate in school through peer reviewed research. I understand that masks are not 100% effective, but they're better than nothing. And so we just throw it all out and do nothing? My child is under 11 years old, cannot get vaccinated. My wife is a physician at Children's Hospital. There is an increase in pediatric cases. There is an increase in the severity of the illness. Whether we like it or not, it is being seen, whether you choose to believe it or not. There are children on heart-lung bypass machines. Right now, I don't want that to be my child. I support the mandate. Hopefully, we will get a vaccine soon, and we can relax these measures, but Delta is a lot different than the earlier virus. I'm ashamed that this has become politicized. This should not be politicized. Obviously, Douglas County has chosen to make it politicized.
Mr. Tyler, you're over time. If you could wrap it up, please.
All right. Thank you. I realize this is a done deal. I hope that the Douglas County School District stays, stays firm in their stance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Troy, who's next?
Okay, we've had a couple drop-offs, so I'm going to give one last chance here to RJ. RJ, you're unmuted. Well, you muted yourself. Okay, now try again. All right, it appears, RJ, you're unmuted. You keep muting yourself again. Try one more time.
It keeps.
Okay. That was the last person that I had waiting. That was the last person that I had waiting online. RJ, if you could please chat me your comments, I will make sure that they are part of the record. Thank you.
Oh, hello? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yes.
If you can give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
My phone was doing battle with my car. Sorry, but you can hear me now.
Yes, please give us your name, your last name, spelling, and your address, please.
Yes, it is RJ O'Connor, O-C-O-N-N-O-R, 19085 East Oak Creek Place in Parker, 80134. My comments are a lot of anecdotal information that's been given out, and a lot of emotion and feeling-based, and some compelling stories that people have told. But for a year and a half now, we have been told that this is all about the science and data. And yet, when it comes to the mask issue, how many, how much science, how much data, how much research, how much studies have the CDC done in the time to check on the effectiveness of masks? I'll tell you the answer. It's zero. Their latest information they're basing masking on with the Delta variant is coming from India off of a report from a couple of doctors out there that's already been debunked. There have only been two controlled groups' studies in the last four years on the effectiveness of masks. One out of Vietnam, one out of Denmark. The Denmark study came back as inconclusive. They couldn't make a decision as to whether the mask was effective because the control group that didn't have a mask, 2% of those people got coronavirus. The control group that did wear a mask, 2.1% of them came down with coronavirus. The study out of Vietnam completely poo-pooed everything about the effectiveness of masks on viral transmission. Now, the CDC, they're not using any of these studies. There is a significant lack of peer-reviewed research on this that the CDC is using. So what are people like us who are actually taking the emotion out of it and actually trying to dig into the information and find out what the facts are so we can make an informed decision for our kids, for our families, for everything? The research does not point to masks being effective. It just isn't there. The science and data isn't there. I applaud the Douglas County Commission for taking a stand. This is the right thing to do. We should not be forced into masks. Parents, if you feel your kid's going to be better in a mask, you do you. Nobody is getting in the way of you doing that. But please, get out of the way of us who want to do the same thing for our kids without masks. That's it.
Thank you, RJ.
Commissioner Thomas, I have a couple more people trying to get in to raise their hand, but we'll come back to them. Go ahead into the hearing room.
Great, thank you. It is now 12:48. We are going to take a 10-minute break so that everybody can take a break. We will be back in at 12:58, and then we'll start with people here in the room. There are 16 still signed up, ready to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. We are back in session. It is 1:02 in the afternoon. We've got 16, excuse me, gentlemen. Gary and John, excuse me, please. We're back in session. We've got 16 still on the line, still in the room to testify. We have six on the line to speak. The attorney who's here representing us is going to have to leave shortly for a court hearing that he cannot postpone. So I'm going to change the order a little bit. I'm going to have him talk about what the order that Tri-County Health signed on Tuesday, they actually approved a motion, and then last night they actually approved and sent out the public health order. So I'm going to have Mr. Dunaway explain what the health order does and does not do, and what it allows other people to do. So as you leave here and as we do our deliberations, you understand what it is that this order allows. Mr. Dunaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Madam Chair, the order itself is about six pages, but the most pertinent part for our purposes is the bold portion at the bottom of page five. And it has two provisions that are bolded. The first one says that a county's decision to opt out of this order does not preclude any individual school district, school, or childcare facility from following this order or adopting the provisions of this order as their own policy or rule. The school district will obviously have their own attorneys interpreting that. Daycare centers perhaps don't have one, obviously would encourage them to check with an attorney or call Tri-County themselves. But in the legal opinion of the county attorney's office, what this is saying is that if you go forward with this resolution and opt out of the order from Tri-County, it simply means there is no order to enforce within Douglas County. But the second part of the sentence goes ahead to explain that the school district, the childcare, the private schools, just like any other business, they're still open to adopt this order as their own if they choose to do so. So essentially, next Monday, everyone will be in the same position they were last Monday. If they want to have a rule on masks, just like any restaurant can do, they're free to, but they're not under any obligation. And then, of course, the last sentence that's bolded simply emphasizes that this is the county's prerogative to opt out of the order, and no individual school district can do it on their own. No school can do it on their own. No childcare can do it on their own. So again, in simpler terms, if you go forward with the resolution, opting out of the order, there will simply be no order in Douglas County to enforce.
Thank you, Mr. Dunaway. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Dunaway?
Mr. Dunaway, thank you for that legal clarification. No doubt, there have been many questions and comments from citizens specifically associated with who's running the ball here and who is in charge of the decision-making. So as I understand it, should the board decide today to opt out of that public health order? There is no public health order. I'm not intending to ask you to provide legal advice to the school or anyone other than the county, but is there anything that would restrict the school board from not following what we do today or what Douglas County chooses to do in terms of an opt-out? Are they required, from any other legal perspective, to follow the recommendations of Tri-County Health?
I appreciate the opportunity to make the clarification, Commissioner Layden. And yes, that is, what they were clear on, on their first sentence was, we can opt out and make it where this isn't a rule in Douglas County, countywide, but we lack the power to prevent the school district, or a restaurant for that matter, from imposing its own mask regulation. Their house, their rules.
Right. So I guess maybe the more nuanced question is whether or not the school district is bound by the Tri-County Health order because they are the current health department?
Absolutely not. If we opt out, I mean, currently they are, but if the board opts out of the order from Tri-County, there simply is no order.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Teal?
No questions for Counselor Dunaway. His legal advice and interpretation for the board was sufficient for me.
Thank you. Mr. Dunaway, that order also has information about enforcement as well. Is that correct?
It does. And again, that would not be applicable. Nothing in there would be applicable if we opt out.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to move on to the next list of names that are here in the room. Kristi Adams, Lindsay Watson, Alex Connick, Paige Fesmire, and Chris, I can't read the last name. So Kristi, if you can say your name. Oh, you have some helpers.
These are my children. They are three and four. I am their voice.
If you could give us your name, spell your last name and your address.
My name is Kristi Adams, like the county, A-D-A-M-S. My address is 5260 South Geneva Way in Inglewood. I am a mother of three children. I have a five-year-old also in kindergarten at a private Douglas County school. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate being able to have a voice. It is imperative that you know that I support your decision to opt out of the mask mandate presented by Tri-County Health, which I might remind my fellow constituents is an unelected office. My husband and I strongly believe in a family's right to choose what is best for us as individuals. Furthermore, we also realize that not everyone will be on the same page. But isn't that the beauty of being adults? Learning to respect one another despite our differences, knowing that each family is competent enough to do what they believe is best. This is also something that I would like to teach my children, how to make accurate decisions based on information and personal belief, and how to respect others who may disagree. In my opinion, mandates completely extinguish the ability to not only express our freedoms as families, but also take away the opportunity for us to have these discussions with our children and teach them how to grow into respectful, competent adults, which isn't that what education is all about. Thank you to those of you who have provided a plethora of data. And I would just like to close by reading you all a verse. Joshua 1:9, "Have I not commanded you? Be strong and courageous. Do not be afraid. Do not be discouraged, for the Lord your God will be with you wherever you go." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lindsay Watson?
Hi, my name is Lindsay Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N, and I live at 4427 Chala Trail in Castle Rock. I think it's been long enough. Our kids have sacrificed enough. I know some would rather believe we are monsters. It's easy to paint us as uncaring, uneducated conspiracy theorists rather than acknowledge that we are humans just like you, with families, beliefs, doing what we feel is best in our hearts. I know it's easy to cheer for mandates and boo hiss at the hesitant, the noncompliant, when it's something you agree with, but someday it won't be. Freedom is vitally important. Masks have been worn since March of 2020. It's been 18 months, somewhere around 500 days. These are our kids. Our kids cannot be expected to carry this burden. Vaccine is now here for those that are concerned about contracting the virus. You can choose to vaccinate, and my family can choose to. Why does my vaccination status matter if you're protected? But we are here to talk about our children wearing masks, and that's such a bigger request than you credit. I understand there are family members that are immunocompromised. I don't mean to sound uncaring because I care. I personally have family members fighting for their lives with cancer, but let's face it, this is nothing new. People have been fighting cancer and disease, and we've never been forced, and they've never forced the American population to change their behaviors. We've never expected our children to carry this burden. Doesn't my son being able to live matter too? Getting asthma from playing basketball and not being allowed to be a child, we have created so much fear in our children. I'm worried about the lasting effects this will create for our next generation. Suicide rates, psychological struggles, depression, and this isn't our babies. I've heard about variants, but unpopular opinion. Flu shots get updated annually. Variants will happen, mask or no mask, vaccine or no vaccine. Cloth and non-medical masks do not protect anyone from anything. I understand it does make some feel safe, but in reality, a child coughs or sneezes into the mask and particles still travel through the mask. Furthermore, when our kids touch it, because they inevitably will, those germs end up all over the school. Masking provides protection is a fantasy. We are not considering a mandate for medical-grade masks. First, we ask our children and our families to essentially stop their lives. Two weeks to flatten the curve. Seventy-two weeks later, we're here having this conversation about masks. Forgive me if I don't believe you when you say. It's just until we get through this Delta variant concern. I would sacrifice, but stop forcing my children to sacrifice. This is not their burden to carry. I saw photos of the kids their first week back at school this year, smiling, hugging, playing with enthusiasm and passion. A completely different picture from the prison photos from 2020. Our kids deserve their life back, their freedom, and their childhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Hello. If you can give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
My name is Alex Connick, C-O-N-N-I-C-K, 10408 Rutledge Street in Parker. I'm here today to just express my support for opting out of the Tri-County Health mask mandate. The fact is, there's no evidence that masking children is effective, despite what the authoritarians at Tri-County Health tell us. If there's no evidence to support a health mandate, the Tri-County does not have the right to implement the mandate. Some of the reasons Tri-County gives for their authoritarian mandate will follow. First, they say mask-wearing is an important and effective prevention strategy to keep students and staff safe. There's no evidence to support this claim. The next thing they say is transmission of COVID-19, exacerbated by the more transmissible Delta variant, is highly likely in the school setting without high levels of mask-wearing. I know this sounds really scary, but there's no evidence for this. I don't know what sort of fantasy land these people are living in. Have these people at Tri-County Health, have they seen the damp pieces of cloth that kids are forced to wear all day? They're filthy. They fall on the floor. They get stepped on. They're constantly being taken on and off, and they're not worn correctly in most cases. If every child wore a properly-fitted N95 mask that was changed out several times per day, then I believe maybe a masking mandate might work a little bit. But we all know this is impossible. Wearing filthy, damp cloths does nothing to lower the transmission of the virus. The next thing they say is transmission in the setting would pose considerable risk, including risk to the health of children. There, in a cohort of 75 million that are 18 and under, there have been a total of about 400 deaths. That is not much of a risk, if you ask me. We all know that the flu is much more dangerous for children, and this also has no evidence to back it up. The next thing they say is risk of transmission to family and friends outside of the school setting. If people are worried, family and friends are worried, they can get a vaccine and then basically be immune from dying from the virus. So again, that does not back up their claim. And then they say risk of interference with in-person learning due to isolation of positive cases and quarantine of children exposed to outbreak situations. I agree about in-person learning, but why would we quarantine? If you're sick, stay home. When you feel better, come back. Who cares about case totals when COVID is not a danger for children? We don't keep track of cases of the common cold because it doesn't matter, as the common cold is not dangerous. I encourage all of my fellow constituents here to fight back. This is the time when we need to get loud. My children, I have two boys, seven and nine, they will be in school in person on Monday with no mask, and I encourage everyone else to take the same stance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Paige Fesmire?
My name is Paige Fesmire. I live at 6695 Diamond Ridge Parkway here in Castle Rock.
And how do you spell your last name?
F-E-S-M-I-R-E.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I want to thank all of the parents who took time out of their day to be here. I know it's very hard to take off work and support our kids. I'm going to try to not get emotional, but I have a 15-year-old who was suicidal last year, and I still don't know if I will ever get him back. He is still struggling. He has anxiety. Both of my children have lung issues, but I support him this year not wearing a mask. I want him to have a normal experience. My 10-year-old went every day and cried at the carpool lane. Every day was a negotiation. Just wear the mask. Just this year, it'll be over. We'll get through it. He had many tardies and many absences, for which the principal sent me an email and said, "We see that Logan has many absences and tardies. Is there anything the school can do to help at home?" My reply back was, "Remove the freaking masks. Every day is a struggle for this child." And God bless him, now that I have stood up. He said today, "Mom, I know I'm not going Monday because we're going to go protest. Can I please go Tuesday and not wear my mask? And when they ask me to put one on, I will say, 'No, thank you.' And if they ask me to go to the principal's office, I will gladly walk down and you can come pick me up." At 10 years old, he is willing to do this. This is not fair to our kids. I know you guys will do the right thing. I hope we can get out of Tri-County, and thank you for supporting your constituents.
Thank you, Paige. I believe it's Chris Chavez on Holmly. How about Brad Johnson?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Brad Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N. I live at 4591 High Spring Road here in Castle Rock. I'm a certified safety professional. I have years of experience working with respiratory protection and PPE. I'm here to tell you that cloth masks don't work, in case you didn't already know. Surgical and N95 masks are ineffective against viruses. That includes COVID, coronavirus. That includes RSV, the flu, the cold. They're ineffective. They don't work. That's even talking about adults. Children are even worse. I don't know if anyone at Tri-County has ever seen a two- through 11-year-old. They don't wear their clothes properly. They're not going to wear a mask properly. The droplets, the particles, the things that these masks are supposed to be protecting from, it's a moot point. The moment you touch the mask, your hands are contaminated. These kids touch everything, okay? I have three kids. I have a three-year-old, a four-year-old, and a six-year-old. The only thing that is going to stop this pandemic is not going to be masks. It is going to be immunity. Masks are not going to work. Masks are not going to keep kids in school. Look at last year. They wore masks. They still had to quarantine. Classes were still shut down for extended periods of time. It's not going to help. Based on the people speaking today and the survey that Tri-County did, your constituents do not want masks on two- through 11-year-olds. The vast majority, I think that survey was probably even undersampled, given the number of people speaking today. We can't easily influence what the tyrants at Tri-County do or what orders they put out, but we're here to ask you guys to unanimously opt out of this order. Parents who want freedom in your county shouldn't be forced to find other options to exercise their right to make safe and healthy choices for their children. Masks on two- through 11-year-olds won't stop during the pandemic, so take them off of these kids. Let them be kids, and let them go back to school with no mask. For everyone that wants masked freedom, you already have it. If all of you send your kids to school with no masks, and I'm hearing a lot of people saying that, and that's very encouraging, regardless of this or any future decisions by the unelected or unelected leaders, they can't stop us because this is America. We are free, and we, the people, don't want these masks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I cannot read this name on Hyacinth Place in Highlands Ranch.
Lana Marsh?
That could be it. Starts with an L.
Yep, that's me.
Okay. If you could come up and tell us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Svetlana Marsh. I live on 10577 Hyacinth Place. As you recognize, my name is Svetlana, so I'm originally from Ukraine. I moved to this amazing country 15 years ago. I married an American. I have two beautiful children that belong to Douglas County. I have 10-year-old and 3-year-old. When pandemic started, obviously everyone was scared. Everyone didn't know what to do. But for me, being from different country, from growing up in USSR, I heard the bell. It was ringing really loud, and I'm sorry if I'm emotional. I remember my childhood, when every child didn't have to go to school, but had to go to parade and hold Lenin's picture. People did not have any freedom. And when I moved to this amazing country, I could not be more proud that I'm a citizen now, that I'm raising my kids here. And I'm telling you, Douglas County is one of the most amazing places in the United States, and the United States is the most amazing country in this world. We are free, and people who actually didn't have to grow up with a tyranny, didn't have to be bullied because they're different. You do not understand. You do not hear the bells. The socialism is already here, and not a lot of people are seeing it. So many people died for our freedom, for my freedom. I still have family back home, and you don't even comprehend what is happening. A lot of people can be bought. Decisions can be done just because of the amount of money. But this is free country. This is free country, and my children deserve to have a breath of fresh air. They need to know that they have rights. You already can't You already can see what's going on in Afghanistan. You see what's happening. The people have no freedom. Let's not let people dictate what's gonna happen with our kids. This is our future. Who is gonna take care of us when we are older? Who is gonna take care of us? We are for freedom of choice. Every parent knows how to parent their children. Let them decide. And I'm sorry I took a little more time, and I'm really, really, really passionate because the United States is the most amazing country in the world, and I know this firsthand. So I'm begging you, please, hear us. If they want, put masks on their kids, let them. But we do not wanna mask our children. I do not wanna relieve what I relieved when I was a child. Please, listen to me and wake up. It is really creeping up. The socialism is almost here. So many people died and paid the price. I'm begging you, please, listen to us. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam Hebner?
Boy, you hate to follow Lana, don't you? Lana, thank you for those words. Wonderful reminder. My name's Adam Hebner. I live at 7225 Box Canyon Road in Sedalia. I have three young children, four, six, and almost nine. And I had planned remarks, similar to the remarks you've heard from the other constituents already today, to come up and talk about things like headlines, things like Norway last night decided that the pandemic is completely over and have established headlines to that effect. I thought I would tell you some statistics, talk a little bit about microns, you know, virus particles and things like that. But it seems that, number one, everyone has already done an exceptional job at sharing that information. And so I asked, what can I bring? It's simply this. It's the idea that one thing we all already know is that this is no longer a difference of opinions. We're not talking about people who believe in masks and people who don't believe in masks. We're not talking about people who believe in viruses and people who don't believe in viruses. Those are simplistic ideas, and both sides dismiss the other by saying they're just ignorant. I think that the cowards and fools at home who have taken the idea that they would somehow have some parenting capacity over my children are certainly welcome to send their children to my home. I'll teach them to be men at least and show up. But to, to go a little further beyond, I, I want to say this, this is important. This is not a battle between left and right and statistics and non-statistics. It's actually a battle between liars and those who do not lie, evil and good. And everyone here knows it, and you guys know it as well. And those at Tri-County have succumbed to that instinct that some humans have to desire to fascistically, authoritarily control other human beings. And this is the moment. This is the thing we all got taught about. We're all still surprised it's here. We all thought it would be generations down the road, but it's not. It's here today. And what they want is control. They don't want safety. We can all see through that, even they see through it. They don't want the children to be healthy. We can see through that as well. What they want instead is to control other human beings, because humans are valuable. Alexander Solzhenitsyn was a dissident in the Soviet Union and was sent to Gulag after Gulag after Gulag. He finally was such a thorn in the side of the Russians that they decided to send him home in 1974, and before he left, he wrote one last essay. The essay was a response to a question which had been asked to him. What could we have done to prevent this from happening? What should we have done when we had the chance? He said this, "Not every man is built to speak. Not everyone can write, not everyone can stand. But there is one way that everyone can be protected from the rise of evil, and that is this: Live not by lies." So I challenge you, Commissioners, please, do not live by lies. And we are watching. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do one more in the room before we go online. Christian Metzler? Troy, we'll go back online. Do you still have people online?
I do. First one would be Gerald Burns, and let's see. Gerald, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
My name is Gerald Burns. I am at 435 Ardmore Street in Castle Rock, Colorado. I guess first and foremost, I'd like to applaud the Commissioners for making, for making this
Mr. Burns, you're breaking out.
And enlighten me with some facts. Masks are why we are here today, and this is only--
Mr. Burns, I'm sorry, we're not able to hear you.
Mr. Burns, this is your host. I'm sorry, your phone is cutting out. I would ask that you would chat your comments while the hearing is going on, and it will be part of the record. Sorry that it cut out. We will move on to the next person, and that is going to be Troy Spahn.
Quiet.
Troy?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Troy Spahn, spelled S-P-A-H-N. Address is 504 Ranger Court. It's here in Castle Rock. I have three kids in the Douglas County School District. They are 3, 5, and 8. I'm gonna read you guys a quote. "The liberties of our country, the freedom of our civil constitution are worth defending against all hazards, and it is our duty to defend them against all attacks." Samuel Adams. "These mandates are an attack on our God-given freedoms, and we, the people, will stand up and we will fight for those freedoms." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spahn.
Next in line is Denise Cantu. Denise, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Denise, are you there?
Denise, you are--
I'm sorry.
We'll come back to Denise, and we'll move on, we'll move on to Laura. Laura Kent, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Laura.
Okay. So I'm kind of, first off, thank you for taking the time to hear everybody's viewpoints.
Laura, excuse me, if you could give us your name and spell your last name and your address, please.
I'm so sorry. My name's Laura Kent. Last name K-E-N-T. My address is 2780 Trailblazer Way in Castle Rock. I am a mom of three children, 8, 5, and 2, and I am also an administrator of a childcare center in Arapahoe County. So I am kind of coming duly to speak to this crowd, and I will be going to Arapahoe County Commissioners to do the same thing. I am completely for you guys opting out of Tri-County. As a director of a childcare center with birth through 6-years-old, we have been through the most roller coaster 19 months that I could ever try to explain to you guys. Throughout this entire time, we have not had any masks on our children. We've left it up to the parents to make that choice, and I will continue to stand by that. We have only had one case in a toddler who was a child of a healthcare worker. Last December, there was zero transmission with that, and the child had a cold. And we've recently had one vaccinated staff member test positive with no symptoms. I'm coming more so from the social-emotional development in these children. It's my job to be the advocate for these small children, and it is completely inappropriate to be putting a mask on a child that is 2-years-old, and let's speak for the 6-year-olds and up. These children are, have to see facial expressions. They need to be, they are building their social and their, their speech and language skills, and when you put a mask on them, you cannot hear people enunciating appropriately. Also, in the licensing component, the state licensing component, these masks are, would be considered, what I would feel, a choking hazard to, or a strangulation hazard to these 2-year-olds. The boxes on a lot of these disposable masks say they do not prevent transmission of a disease, and they specifically say that most of them are for ages 4 and up. I guess everybody's really sent it out of the ballpark with other viewpoints. I guess I just wanted to speak from being an administrator of childcare throughout this pandemic, that we've not ever had masks on these kids. We have not had any outbreaks. Everyone is healthy. Everyone is thriving, and I'm here to fight for my own children, who will not be going to school on Monday with a mask on their face in Douglas County. And I'm here to fight for the children that I oversee on a daily basis, and I'm here to fight for my exhausted teachers that do not need to be chasing 2-year-olds around trying to put their mask on their face.
Thank you, Mrs. Kent.
Next in line is Alicia Chaffin. Alicia, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Can you hear me?
We can. If you could give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Perfect. So my name is Alicia Chaffin, and that's C-H-A-F is in Frank, F is in Frank, I-N. And my address is actually 6861 South Claremont Drive, and that's in Centennial, Colorado. My two sons are enrolled in Douglas County. We open enroll into that county district because of the position Douglas County has taken with COVID. So first, I just want to say thank you guys for being a voice for us, that we see you. At the Tri-County Health Board, one voter said, as she was making her vote, that if masks keep my son in school, that alone is worth my vote. But we all lived through 2020 and 2021, and with masks on our children, it did not keep our kids in school. Our children missed from quarantines, they missed in-person education, not to mention the constant juggling of work schedules, and my second grader learning what it meant on my computer screen that I was on mute so that he could ask me a question. Point being, in response to that Tri-County Health Board member, masks did not keep our kids in school. They, they didn't work then, and they're not gonna work now. Mask or no mask, you can spread and contract the virus. Vaccine or no vaccine, you can still spread and contract the virus. What that tells me is that our immune system is the only defense we have for this virus. And while I'm empathetic to those in the community that fear COVID and the Delta variant because of their immune system's ability to fight off a virus, and I myself cannot receive the vaccine because of a health condition, but I wouldn't get it even if I could. As an adult, I would never expect our children, our future, to carry my burden. I would never expect any other parent to sacrifice their child's rights to protect my child. If there was a bullet heading towards your kid, I would certainly jump in front of it, no questions asked. But COVID poses no risk to the health of your child, and if it does pose a risk, I implore you to keep them home. You have that choice. There was a crisis last year in Tri-County, Adams, Arapahoe, and Douglas. It was called teen suicide. Nine suicides, five in one month alone because of coronavirus. The articles read, "Wave of suicides, part of toxic stress from coronavirus." Our children didn't succumb to the virus itself. Our children killed themselves because of the stress being caused, the fear being created. Most kids don't have the foundation to understand or comprehend what everyone is doing to them. What they saw is their world flipped on its head. They saw their lives change entirely. Children crave consistency. It's the first thing I learned as a mom. Schedules, keep them focused. They know what to expect because there was consistency. However, over the last 18 months, the only consistency was inconsistency. So as we weigh these risks, the true risk impacting our children is the fear that is being mandated that our children can't understand.
Mrs. Chaffin, you're out of time. If you could wrap it up, please.
Yep, I'm done. So why is our focus not on the nine children that actually died? And I beg you, please, please continue with your prior public release. Douglas County will not succumb to fear-based policymaking upon sensational media reports. Thank you. Give our children their childhood back.
Thank you, Mrs. Chaffin.
Looks like the last two people I had online to speak have dropped off. You can go back to the hearing room.
Are either Mr. Burns or Ms. Cantu still online?
Denise did chat her comment to me, so it is part of the record. And Gerald Burns, we can try him one more time.
Okay, thank you.
Gerald, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
I'm here. I apologize. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, if you could give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
My name is Gerald Burns. Last name B-Y-R-N-E-S. I am at 435 Ardmore Street in Castle Rock. I guess first and foremost, I'd like to applaud the Commissioners for making this stand. I'm tired of being forced to do anything. As a productive member of society and a conservative, I will stand beside everyone who shares the same views. If you don't, I encourage you to enlighten me with the facts. Masks are why we are here today, and this is only a continuation of a larger things-in-motion. What is the reasoning behind why they have to bribe people for the vaccine, only to make me wonder what is in it? And when bribed, they move to force people by threatening their source of income? Will they force my child out of public education or public schooling if she decides not to wear a mask? It's a bulldog tactic, if you ask me, that only supports the already-known agenda of these decisions on this virus. Has anyone in here seen COVID this year? I was just wondering if it decided to skip Colorado this year, because I haven't heard anything about it. Wear a mask, they say it protects you. They say the same about a vaccine, but by definition, vaccine is defined as a substance used to stimulate the production of antibodies and provide immunity. I don't see immunity in this vaccine. But let's force everyone to get it, or else you'll lose your job. My wife is a nurse, frontline for, what is it, 530 days, give or take, and has only done what she normally does and has not contracted the virus, let alone has anyone in my home contracted it. She works around the signal every single day. She developed an immune system to fight these things. Masking had zero part of that. Hand washing probably had a lot to do with it. We have also opted out of the flu shot, and by either chance, or I would like to call it intelligence, we've never gotten flu. The irony, the decisions to mandate these factless, factless things have become almost comical, but let's face it, facts don't care about feelings. I work with anhydrous ammonia, and I have to be fitted for a mask every year. So are we gonna be fitting 2-year-olds and 3-year-olds for masks? I can only imagine the line or the wait period that's gonna take. If you don't want to make your kid wear a mask, don't make him wear a mask. If your kid wants to wear a mask, let him wear a mask. If your kid wants to wear a mask, let him wear a mask. But that is about the extent of it. My daughter is 11. She's in a new school. And if you want me to tell her she has to wear a mask, but the other two grades in her school don't because she's 11 and they're 13, I'm not going to do it. That's almost as bad as our joke of a governor giving out participation awards to the sheep lining up to have whatever it is injected in them. A gift card and a raffle ticket is an incentive for adults. What are they going to offer our kids? Now, a mandate, only mandate my family will be doing is mandating and demanding our freedom, our rights, and our voice to be heard. I'm tired of hearing this, and we will be choosing to not even notice Tri-County and their recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. So we're going to come back into the hearing room. We've got five people left. I'll read all names, and John Anderson can start, then Steve Howard, Tegan Braun, Rachel Lyon, and Jeanette McMahon.
John Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. And I was in law enforcement, so my residential is protected by that. But I am a Douglas County resident and have been for 65 years. Commissioner Layden, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Teal. Commissioners, thank you for your constitutional leadership. Commissioner Layden, three or four years ago, you declared Douglas County to be a constitutional county. That has stood, and all of you have supported that all this time and is still going strong. I thank you all for that. Thank you for this opportunity for all of us to express our freedom of speech and protect our children in, in the American way, the only way that there is to protect our children, freedom of choice. That said, three years ago, I retired from the Castle Rock Police Department, serving after 40 years. Forty-three years ago, I raised my right hand and swore to uphold the Constitution of our beautiful nation. And here, I'll say this, a quick fact that I want to say on this part, that when I was in law enforcement, or any law enforcement officer now, if you contact a minor for any reason that involves any type of government contact, I guarantee you that if you do not inform the parents, that you will, all hell will break loose. That's what you do in law enforcement. That's what you do when you're a government official. I will be the first to say that I think that the steps that the Tri-County, the governor, and all them trying to control our children without our permission is dead wrong. And it should not be allowed. Yet, our school still tried to do that. I'm saying this because I'm running for Douglas County Sheriff, and I stand with you all. I will not enforce any of these unadvised and unconstitutional behavior, never on my watch while I do that, or anything against our Constitution, gun rights or anything. I'm John Anderson. That's where I'm at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Steve Howard, are you still here?
Hello, Steve Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D, live on 443 Johnson Drive, in Castle Rock. Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak today. And thank you for all the work you've done and continue to do. We really appreciate it. I'm a father of three children, nine, 11, 16. Last year had a serious effect on my children. Their mental health was affected. They fell behind in academics. Them not having the social aspect of being in the classroom with their classmates was a pretty big deal. I've also been a firefighter for 14 years, working in the Douglas County area. As a family, we complied with the mask mandates from the very beginning of the pandemic until it went from a health crisis to a monster driven by evil and control. Comical to me that they push so hard for healthy individuals with strong immune systems to place a mask on their face, which hinders and hurts them more than it can ever help. And this is just a couple of statistics, but 1.4 million Americans attempt suicide a year. Forty-two thousand are successful. Percentage-wise, that's double the death rate of the COVID. Another statistic, 2.8 million people die a year from obesity. It's four, that's over four times the amount of deaths from COVID-19. But yes, please put a cloth mask on your face. It's for your own safety. Our freedom and our rights are being infringed on daily. And when we speak out and take surveys, like the one we just took, the majority, 65% to 35%, in favor of not masking our children, they still don't listen. We have various masks for the work that I do that helps protect us when we need them. And none of them are made out of the same cloth as this t-shirt, because they don't work. The fact that they lie to us about the class masks is asinine, in my opinion. My fellow brothers, sisters, and myself have been on the streets and frontline since the pandemic happened. And we have run some sick people. But 87% of them in our district all had some sort of comorbidity along with it. And the sickening part to that is that they die of sepsis, and then they're still classified as a COVID death. The mental health problem we have in this country is more of a threat than the virus that has 99%, 99% survival rate, in my opinion. I saw this quote the other day that stated, imagine if there was 99.7% chance you wouldn't get cancer, but you were forced to go to chemo just in case. My children deserve to be heard. They deserve to have a normal school year and a normal life. This coming Monday, we will not be masking our children because that is our right and not theirs. We ask for you to stay strong and keep representing us the way you have been because we need your help. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Tegan Braun. Rachel Lyon.
Hi, I'm Rachel Lyon. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I live at 12 Spellview Lane in Littleton. Last year, my family and I went to great lengths to move to a place where our child could attend a Douglas County school. I call Douglas County the land of the free and the brave. So let's keep it that way, please. Most of what I wanted to say has already been said about viral particles, viron sizes, the efficacy of a cloth mask. I would like to caution parents, you're giving your children a false sense of security should they truly be in a compromising situation. If you are telling them that they are protected by a cloth mask, you're doing more harm than good. I always tell my husband, watch out for the do-gooders because they'll do you in. But C.S. Lewis said it much better than I, so I'm going to share a quote with you. "Of all tyrannies, a tyranny sincerely exercised for the good of its victims may be the most oppressive." It would be better to live under a robber baron than under the omnipotent moral busybodies. The robber baron's cruelty may sometimes sleep. His cupidity may at some point be satiated. But those who torment us for the good of our own will torment us without end, for they do so with the approval of their unconscious. So we support you, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette McMahon. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak who has not yet had the opportunity? Please come forward.
Sorry, I didn't sign in.
That's okay. We still want to hear from you.
All right. My name is Alicia Malouf, A-L-I-C-I-A-M-A-L-O-U-F-F. And I live at 4458 Elegant Street here in Castle Rock. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you and participate in the amazing democratic process here that we have in our local government. I'm speaking today in support of the Douglas County opting out of the Tri-County Health Department's mandate to mask children age two to 11. And let's not forget the adults that interact with them all day. I have five children, three of which are currently in the Douglas County school system. Two of them are graduates. One is currently in college. My youngest, 10, is most affected by this horrific coercion within the educational system. Everything that I have to say has already been said by everyone here. So I won't take any more of your time, your precious, precious time that we have here on earth. But what I do want to ask is for your support, commissioners, at the protest at 620 Wilcox Street on Monday, 8:30 to 11:00, and on Tuesday before and during the school board meeting. Please, everyone, show up. I add my name to the list of parents who will not be sending their child to school in a mask. And I call in every parent here, every parent watching online, to stand up to the bullies who are trying to force their will on the bodies of our children. Thank you for upholding the will of the people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Anderson. I live at 2630 Paw Printway here in Castle Rock. I have three children. They are second grade, fourth grade, and then I have a two-year-old. I was just recently looking into childcare for my two-year-old, and there's no way she's going back, which I guess means I won't be going back to work full-time or part-time because there's no way I'm putting a mask on her. And for the woman who called in and said, "It's a strangulation hazard," absolutely, yes, it is. Are they supposed to sleep in them when they take their naps during the day at their childcare places? As for my second and fourth grader, they both have mental health problems, which I cannot believe that. They're, they're nine and 10. And why? This all came about during the pandemic. And, you know, as mama bear, I tackled that head-on. And I don't, I don't need any help with that. You know what? I took care of that. I read my books. I figured out how to help them with their anxiety and their OCD. Yeah, try dealing with OCD in a child in a pandemic. Raw hands, they, they suddenly feel like they're responsible for everyone else because people are telling my kids that they're going to kill other people and make their grandmas sick? No, no. I've taught my kids a lot about personal responsibility in this pandemic, and that's what I'm seeing a lack of in my own generation. I'm an old millennial, and I'm seeing it down. This has been ongoing for so long. And you know what? My parents always taught me personal responsibility. Nobody takes care of you but you. And nobody's going to take care of the kids except for their parents. I am the best person to take care of my children and help my children, and by God, I will do it. And what is going on right now is pure insanity. And I just thank you so much for creating the opt-out and giving us this voice today. Because even my own children, my little second grader and fourth grader, they can see through this. They know this isn't right. And they said to me, they know I'm coming to this meeting, and I'll be at the school meeting, and I'll be at the protest, and I'll be at the next board meeting. And they're like, "Thanks, Mom. Thanks, Mom." I'm glad that, I'm glad that you get all hot about this. And I actually had a whole speech today, and I didn't do it. And the reason I didn't do it is because I went up and left my phone because I was dealing with my two-year-old, and I think it ended up in her hands. So I'm kind of winging it. But, you know, I'm glad I did it because this is not usually, this is not usually my thing. And I can honestly say that my three children look up to me, and they look up for the sassy woman that I am. And just thank you. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. It's really important. It's so much bigger than masks. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Troy, do you have anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of folks waiting. First one would be Chris Allison. Chris, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you all for the time to speak. Like Troy said, my name is Chris Allison, A-L-L-I-S-O-N. I live at 7177 Therewest in Miami Castle Pines. I've only been a resident of Douglas County for about three years now. And I apologize if anything I say to you has already been said because I was late to the meeting due to work. But I think I, I have an eight-year-old son who is at Cherry Hills Christian, and I have a 16-year-old daughter who attends Valor. I think my family has kind of a unique perspective on this. All four of the people in my household contracted COVID. All four of us came through with flying colors, with vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc, and rest. Part of what I think makes my situation unique is I lost my mom to COVID. She had comorbidities. Somebody brought COVID into the hospital. She contracted it and died. With all of that said, I implore this board to not take on these mandates, to separate yourself from the people that are forcing these things on you. Because, or on us, I should say. My family has endured this. My mother has been lost to this. And I will tell you that I think most of this is around fear. There are other viruses and substances that cause death in children at a much higher rate. And I won't bore you because I'm assuming others have shared these statistics with you already. But if this was about safety and health, we would have put masks on these children a long time ago. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration. And most of all, I want to, I want to share with the people who are afraid of their children contracting this that it's not certain death. Your children are resilient. And there are many, many home remedies and natural homeopathic type, excuse me, there are remedies that you can take. There's not a certain death to this. This is and always will be about fear. So for the parents that are concerned, I get it. My son has asthma. He contracted it. He had zero or very little in way of symptoms. I, I got it the hardest. I was hit hardest by this. And we all came through. We're all stronger for this. And my last point that I wish the Tri-County Health Department or any other health department would spend more time focusing on, instead of the fear, is about increasing your own internal immune system, taking care of yourself, right? Early on, we were told, stay indoors. And then it comes out that you should be outdoors and letting your body get vitamin D, right? So while there's statistics, and you can cook books any way you want to. I work in the data science field. I understand statistics and data modeling. And I just want everybody to know that I can find about anybody that I want that will agree with my opinion, as long as they have a way to cook the data. So I just wanted to share that. I hope that this board makes the right decision when it comes to self-interest, when it comes to the ability to make the decision on what's best for your children. And there again, my last comment is, this is about fear, not about safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Troy, do you have anyone else?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I have one last person. It looks like Allison Gilardi. Allison, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Allison Gilardi, G-H-I-L-A-R-D-I. I live at 394 Hampstead Avenue, Castle Rock.
Thank you, Allison.
It started, it started with a two-week, everyone stay home, flatten the curve. It turned into, we are slowing it down. We are shutting the schools down. We are shutting the economy down for a few months. We need to stay home and protect everybody. We celebrated our frontline heroes. We had a hope this would end. It did not. We watched this disease ravish our country. We put on masks. We social distanced. We stopped taking our children to the grocery store. We stayed home. We did our part. We started this year fresh and new. We spent the summer enjoying everything Douglas County had to offer for my children. My oldest told me today, she is 10. She is willing to put the mask back on if she is able to play with her friends again and eat lunch with her friends and be in the classroom. That's a price she's willing to pay. But then she tells me, "Mommy, but what if they tell us we can't continue to go to school? And we can't play with our friends, and we have to be locked up again?" She flat-out told me she's no longer going to trust her principal, her teacher, the people in authority around her because she feels that she's being pulled in two different directions. My child is willing to do this just to be with people. It's not okay. It is not okay to use our children as pawns in these games. It started with a mask mandate. Will it soon be a force my child into a vaccine mandate with only four to six months of case study for emergency use approval? We have a line in front of us. We have a line in front of us. I am not willing to cross that line any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Troy, do you have anyone else?
We have completed online. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. One last ask for this room. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. There's no one else coming forward. Bring it back to the board for comments. Who would like to go first?
So normally, in hearings such as these, the resolution is read first, and I'm not sure how the board would like to proceed with the reading of the resolution. Okay, I will have some additional comments. And I think if it pleases the board, I'd like to start with some initial comments. There is nothing particularly special about me. I'm a dad. I'm a father of three kids in this county. I am here because you elected me. You don't work for me. I work for you. And it's your taxes that pay for all of us. It's your taxes that pay for our school board and everything that happens from a governmental perspective in Douglas County. So it's a true honor to be here before you and to hear all of your comments. We've been here since 10:30 this morning, and I am amazed by the engagement, the intelligence, the dedication that the citizens of our community have to share their views. A lot of you probably have jobs that you have left, other schedules, things going on, and you've sacrificed your time to be with us today. So I thank you for that. You know, my view is that my job is not to stand in your way, to shackle your children with unreasonable restrictions, but to empower you. That is my job, is to get out of the way and empower your decisions. You know, I think you've heard us say, and I'll just repeat it again, as one commissioner, and I think my board would agree, we are not going to be swayed by sensational national news media, by clickbait on social media that gets their revenue from advertising. We're not gonna be swayed by polls. We have been following this data alongside you for 17 going on 18 months. And I would ask staff at this time to bring up the specific data around hospitalizations per 100,000 by age group, which is actually the data provided on the Tri-County Health Department's own dashboard. So staff, I don't know if you have that prepared? Okay.
One moment, Commissioner Layden. Sarah's gonna be bringing that up.
So I'm actually gonna ask you to go directly to the COVID-19 hospitalization rates per 100,000 by age group. If you go to cases hospitalized. We're pretty familiar with these tabs. It's what we do every day. Thank you. And then if you can click on just the past two months, thank you very much. This is Tri-County Health's own data, and this is what we look at every day. That green line at the very bottom is for the age group 0 to 18. Today, we're here talking about specifically the impacts of the Delta variant to kids under 12. One of my biggest concerns, and I know my board's concern over this entire period, has not always been cases. It's severity. It's hospitalizations. It's deaths. That green line is a flat line all the way to the present day, okay? And so part of that that's very informative is that that's .331 of a 14-day rolling hospitalization rate. That is what I'm looking at. I'm not looking at clickbait on social media. If I thought your kids were in danger, you would hear from us, and we'd be making very strong recommendations. We wouldn't be making mandates even in that situation because the choice is up to you. But just to continue on, again, basically what we are seeing is that there are no peer-reviewed scientific studies that demonstrate that there is severity for kids under 12. We asked Tri-County Health and their experts to provide information to us. We asked the area hospital directors to provide information to us that would support any indications of severity. We didn't receive anything that would dissuade us today. Now, what we did hear about is that transmission is high, Delta is contagious, and that they were worried about the adults. The statistic that I'm also reminded of is that nearly 100% of all adults in Douglas County have had the opportunity to get the vaccine and make choices about their own health care. So today's decision, in my mind, is not gonna be focused on the adults. It's gonna be focused on you as parents and focused on your kids. So I'll be pleased to read the resolution or reserve that following the comments of my fellow commissioners.
I'm fine if you go ahead and read it now.
So today's resolution is opting out of Tri-County Health Department mandatory mask order for students aged 2 to 11. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners, the Board in November 2020, reached an agreement with the Board of Health, BOH, for the Tri-County Health Department, TCHD, to allow individual counties to opt-out of Tri-County Health Department Public Health Orders, PHOs, when the Board deems it appropriate to do so. And whereas, after a meeting on August 16th and 17th, 2021, the Board of Health passed a public health order, quote, "requiring masking for staff and children in childcare and school settings serving students 11 and younger within Tri-County Health Department's jurisdiction." And whereas, the Board is against unnecessary governmental mandates of any kind and further believes that the mask public health order is unnecessary. And whereas, the Board has not received any peer-reviewed scientific research from public health experts, nor has the Board received supportive data from Tri-County Health Department or hospitals that would indicate the Delta variant is more severe for people under 12. Whereas, opting out of the Tri-County Health Department mask order will restore a combination of local and parental discretion regarding how best to keep kids safe and how best to balance mental and physical health needs for children. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board hereby opts out of the Tri-County Health Department Public Health Order dated August 17th, 2021, to take effect August 23rd, 2021, that would have required masking for staff and children in childcares and schools serving students 11 and younger.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. Commissioner Teal?
Madam Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution.
Excuse me. Could we finish with some comments before we do a motion?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Do you have any comments?
I would like to speak in favor of the motion we made.
Okay. I would like to make some comments.
By all means, please.
Okay, thank you. Staff, I had asked for a slide from Tri-County Health that they had collected information about the people who had contacted them. There we go. So I think that this slide is really important. This was tallied by Tri-County Health, and they totaled the comments that they had received. It's my understanding this was online and comments they received. So you can see that they serve Adams, Arapahoe, and Douglas Counties. Douglas County, 65% of you said that you did not support masking in schools under any circumstances. Look at Adams County, 74%. In Arapahoe County, it was 49%. But if you look at the total for all three counties, 62% of the comments that Tri-County Health received were opposed to masking children. I think this is really important because I think parents know their children best. There was a gentleman who came up and spoke and said he wasn't interested in Tri-County helping him co-parent his children. And I thought of all the comments. There were so many fabulous comments we heard from you. But that one really struck me because I am a parent. I raised a child, and I have a grandchild. And there are things I want to go do with my grandchild, but her parents say no. So guess what? I don't do those things because parents are in charge of their kids, period. That is what is most important to me. We heard several people talk about getting us, Douglas County, out of Tri-County Health. So in July of last year, so a little over a year ago, I made a motion in a work session for Douglas County to leave Tri-County Health. Commissioner Layden and Commissioner Partridge voted unanimously with me to do that. After we started the process, we realized how complicated it is to stand up a health department. We had a lot of conversations with Tri-County Health. And those discussions ended with a new policy that was written on November 6th of 2020 that said Douglas County would remain with Tri-County Health through the end of December of 2022 with the understanding that this board could opt-out of any public health order that we believed was contrary to the best interests of our citizens. And that slide that was up there speaks volumes that this board listens to our residents. We listen to the parents of your kids when Tri-County is trying to tell you what to do. And let me add, somebody made a comment that their rights are being taken away by politicians. Let me just clarify that the nine members on the Board of Health of Tri-County are not politicians. They're not elected. They were appointed by other elected officials. When I have called them unelected bureaucrats, some of our Board of Health members attacked me for calling them that. I'm not sure what else to call them when they are interested in rules over you that they weren't elected to do. I'm very proud of both Kim Muramoto and Dr. Linda Fielding, who were appointed and put on that Board of Health by this Board of County Commissioners. And we asked them to listen to the science, to listen to the truth, and make decisions on that Board of Health reflecting those things. So I think it's important that we all understand that these dictates are being made by unelected bureaucrats. I watched the vote Tuesday night, and I was appalled by what I saw going on. One member kept asking for a definition of a denominator or something. I still don't understand what that was all about. I think what's important is what is going to happen in this hearing room today because you have been heard. We have all been inundated with emails, phone calls, social media. We are all parents, and we agree with you. Lastly, I want to talk about mental health. When I was the coroner in this county from 2011 to 2015, I saw far too many kids take their lives. I sat in far too many kitchens with parents, asking why. The difference is that now we have a better understanding of why and what is going on. My fellow commissioners and I met with two important people from Children's Hospital who told us they personally have been in the emergency rooms talking with parents who have brought their children in. This is the crisis that we need to deal with. Kim Muramoto, who's on our Board of Health for Tri-County Health, oversees trauma centers of hospitals across the Front Range. And she has told me that they have no children with COVID in children's hospitals today, not one. But we are struggling to find beds and care for children who have mental health needs. So it is time that we start taking care of the whole child. And that is going to be the basis of the vote that I make today. So thank you. And if there's no other comments that need to be made, you're welcome to make the motion now.
Chair, if it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution opting out of the Tri-County Health Department mandatory mask order for students aged 2 through 11, and wish to speak in favor of the motion. Should there be a second?
Second.
So there is a first and a second. Commissioner Teal, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start my comments by first and foremost thanking my two colleagues and my predecessor for your wisdom last November in giving us this authority and this power today to opt-out of this public health order. I was actually very critical of all three of you at the time, but because I was concerned, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, the delay in us leaving Tri-County Health. Today, I'm not disappointed. I'm not critical of you at all. I praise you for your wisdom, for putting us in this situation today. I also like to thank everyone who spoke today because, you know, you've made my job today really, really easy. And I definitely appreciate that. I appreciate hearing from you all, regardless of the side, quite frankly, of who is speaking on. So we had a couple of speakers talk about the Constitution and talk about our rights. Well, here's the reality. The Constitution's a legal document. Constitution's a legal document defines what government is in America. And you don't have to read very far in the United States Constitution to get to the reasons why we have government in America. It says very clearly and very simply, "provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty." Everything else that comes out of that is for those three things. We are in consideration of a public health order today and our participation in it. A public health order was designed to provide for the common defense, namely, when there's a pathogen loose in the population, a public health order is meant to inform, but also to help, you know, restrict the spread of that pathogen. It's not really meant to restrict the spread or the activities of the healthy people in our population. I have to reject the idea that a public health order is appropriate for a pathogen that, to date, results in just over a .1% mortality rate. And so I reject the idea that the public health order that was issued provides for the common defense. I do not think the public health order actually promotes the general welfare. I actually believe that our opt-out today would promote the general welfare. And as far as secure the blessings of liberty, I do believe that by opting out of this public health order, we will be securing the blessings of liberty. I very much appreciate our neighbor who brought up the C.S. Lewis quote. It's one of my favorites, and I think it's 100% accurate. With that said, I am speaking in favor of the motion to opt-out of the Tri-County Health Department mandatory mask order, and I do ask for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Layden?
You know, I really want to acknowledge and thank this board as well for the incredible support. It's wonderful and an honor to serve in a community and in a county where freedom is recognized and upheld. The final comment that I would make is around the value of the free press. And right now, we're really fighting mostly just a war of misinformation. And if people see a toddler with a ventilator on national news media, I understand why they may be fearful. But I will just say that it is so important to have objective, good journalism. This community, I don't know if they're still here, but Colorado Community Media and our reporters here locally in Douglas County are some of the most objective and outstanding reporters that we have. And I think for parents in particular, my wonderful wife, who's helping to raise our three kids, when she's interacting with her friends and she's reading those papers, she needs to be able to rely on that information and trust it. And objective journalism is so critical for that. So I just wanted to acknowledge the value of the free press and the importance of accurate information.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. I'll just add a couple of things. Two weeks ago, on August 10th, this board passed a resolution that says we are opposed to any mask or vaccine mandates. We believe that all of you have the responsibility and the ability to take care of yourselves. We are continuing to develop a process to see what is the best way to deliver public health services to the citizens of this county. We just established an ad hoc committee with 11 citizens to help us figure out what that... an ad hoc committee with 11 citizens to help us figure out what that looks like. We have had staff working on this since the first of the year. They gave us a book a month and a half ago, that is almost six inches thick, of information of all the things we need to consider as we decide what is the best way to deliver public health. We have to give Tri-County Health a one-year notice of what our intention is. So I would not be at all surprised to see this board sitting in this hearing room before the end of the year, making that decision. So stay tuned. And let me just finally add that there were 60 people online and in person who spoke, and 55 of them spoke for the option to opt out of this public order, which is how I will also be voting today. So if there's nothing else, we have a first and a second. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you. No other business for today. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, before we actually do adjourn, and I do realize this is a special meeting, and we certainly have devoted plenty of time, we did hear from Representative Basely the idea of doing an additional resolution to encourage a school district to join us in opting out of this public health order. If it pleases the board, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to draft a resolution and bring it back to the board for review.
I would second that and offer a friendly amendment, that we include the accurate legal advice that we received from county council, that is their impression and ours, that the school district is entirely within its discretion to honor what we've done today and also opt out.
I take that as an amendment.
Thank you. So we do have a first and a second. I'm going to ask the legal representative here, is there any reason that we cannot go forward with this motion?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
You're just directing staff to, yeah, that to be implemented at some later date.
So staff will be working on that letter. Is that your intent?
Yes, ma'am. It is a resolution, was the nature of the motion. So something for us to bring back to us to take formal action at a later time.
You're okay with your second on that?
I am fine with that, yes.
So we have a first and a second. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries, and this meeting is concluded. Thank you.